If we could just thank you, we're just going to resume now. So we're going to start again, Hans Sade, are you ready?
Yes.
Great. I now welcome Ms. Sue Davies. Ms. Davies, thank you for making yourself available to speak to the committee at short notice and just making it clear that we specifically requested your attendance at this hearing today because we believe that you have important information to help us with our deliberations. You have brought legal counsel with you, which is well within your rights. I understand that information on parliamentary privilege and the protection of witnesses has been provided to you. For the hand side record, could you please state your full names, both of you, and the capacities in which you appear today?
So I'm Susan Davies. I'm here at the request of the committee, but I also know I'm the Executive General Manager of People and Culture for Australia Post.
Thank you. And while legal counsel is not a witness, just for the sake of people in the room, could you just state your full name and the capacity?
My name is Stephen Woodbury. I'm a partner with Ashurst Australia Lawyers and I'm here as Ms. Davies' legal counsel.
Thank you. Ms. Davies, I invite you to make a short opening statement. We understand, we've heard evidence this morning from Ms. Holgate, that you were in attendance much of the, on the 22nd of October, and both before then and after. I'd like to hear your version of events and then we will go to some questions.
Okay. So Senator, I don't have an opening statement, but I'm very happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Could we just, Hans Sade, could we just get Ms. Davies' volume up a bit louder, please? Thank you. Ms. Davies, so you were with Ms. Holgate on the 22nd of October?
Yes.
Yes. And that was, of course, on the day in which Ms. Holgate presented to the Budget Estimates Committee?
Correct, yes.
And where it was revealed in relation to the Cartier watches?
Yes.
And you were with Ms. Holgate after that session and when the Prime Minister made the remarks he did during question time?
Yes.
Ms. Davies, are you aware of any conversation between Ms. Holgate and either the Chair of Australia Post or any other members of the board where she agreed to step aside?
I'm aware of the, if I can elaborate on that, the, obviously there was a lot going on that day. We finished Senate estimates at 12:52. I was in Senate estimates with Ms. Holgate. We left and went back to the Hyatt Hotel. So I'm aware that there was a conversation that went on with Ms. Holgate and the Chair at the hotel. That was before question time at 2:40. So the conversation that I heard, and all of these conversations were one-sided conversations, they weren't on speakers, so I was listening to Christine's side of the conversation. And the conversation there was very much around Christine saying that she didn't wish to stand aside because she felt she had done nothing wrong. I couldn't hear the other side of that conversation, but that was a very clear conversation at the hotel. And that was before 2:40. We then, around about three o'clock in the afternoon, we left in a private car to travel back to Sydney. And that was organised by Ms. Holgate's husband. We did that because there was a lot of media interest and obviously after the, what had happened in the Senate. And from the time we were in the car, from three o'clock through to probably seven or seven thirty when we got back to Sydney, to Ms. Holgate's home, there were so many conversations. It was obviously a lot going on in the car. I was getting a lot of phone calls and Ms. Holgate was getting a lot of phone calls. I'm not aware and do not recall of any conversation, one-sided, where Christine agreed to stand down during that time.
Ms. Holgate told us today that she had been, she'd had a number of conversations with Mr. Tony Nutt throughout this afternoon in question. Do you recall any of those conversations?
Yes, I do.
And what do you understand Ms. Holgate saying to Mr. Nutt?
So Tony Nutt was trying to support Christine during that process. Christine was requesting that she, could she take leave? She was still not wanting to stand down at that stage. She was clearly very upset at that time and Tony Nutt was assisting her and just asking her to stay calm and, you know, let's try and work through this. And he was helping her put together a statement which Christine's put in her submission, which was just a variation of different statements where Christine was wanting to just take some leave. But she was still quite adamant that she didn't want to stand down at that stage.
And in you, what is your knowledge of a board meeting on the night of the 22nd of October?
I haven't got any knowledge of the board meeting. I'd obviously been here the whole of the day. I'd spent the whole of the day travelling back in the car with Christine. I probably got back to my home round about eight o'clock that evening. So I'm not aware of anything that was going on on the other side of the conversations.
Did you ever hear of a board meeting being called that night?
I subsequently understand, I certainly didn't know on the night, but I subsequently understand that a board meeting may have taken place, yeah.
Who do you, do, we, let me rephrase. While you were with Ms. Holgate on the 22nd of October, did Ms. Holgate ever receive any communication from the Communications Minister or the Prime Minister or the Finance Minister?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Were you aware of Ms. Holgate attempting to ensure that the Communications Minister had the full story of what had happened with the watches?
I do remember in the car, Ms. Holgate, again, there were so many conversations going on, but trying to send through texts of the thank you card from someone who had sent that through to her. I do remember different conversations with people around, you know, that information. So, yeah.
What's your understanding of whether Ms. Holgate stood aside, was sacked, resigned? What actually happened, Ms. Davies?
I guess that's a complex question. So, again, if I may provide some context on that. So I assumed very early on in the afternoon, the role of support person for Ms. Holgate. She was very distressed when we left the Senate. She became more distressed, obviously, as the afternoon went on and events started to unfold. I didn't hear a conversation where Christine agreed to stand aside. I did hear conversations where that was discussed, but I never heard her agree to do that. And I think the, from that point on, it was really decided, given the gravity of the situation and the media, the intensity of the media and just really how distressed Christine was, my role in all of this was really to be Christine's support person. And I chose to do that. I did that the following morning on the Friday. And so all of the correspondence with regards to what happened, with regards to standing aside or anything thereafter, was really dealt with through the legal counsel and the Chair.
And were you with Ms. Holgate on the day where she did submit a resignation letter?
No, I wasn't with her on the day of the resignation letter. I certainly had conversations with her every day from the 22nd of October. I had conversations three, four, five times a day with her, right up to that point and thereafter.
Ms. Davies, were you aware of the fact, I'll start that again, Ms. Davies, were you aware that Ms. Holgate had concerns with the BCG report and the recommendations within that report?
I was aware of the, so my knowledge of the BCG report is very limited. And I certainly was aware that Christine had some issues with that, but I wasn't one of the execs who was heavily involved in the BCG report.
Throughout this time, and you said you assumed the role of support person, throughout this time, did you ever hear of other members of the board contacting Ms. Holgate, checking in, making sure she was okay from a human perspective?
I certainly know that Tony Nutt definitely made contact with Christine. I think there were exchanges with the Chair, either by text, I don't know about conversations. Certainly, I had a number of conversations with the Chair where he asked about Christine's welfare, but I was really the primary person to support her through what was just a harrowing time.
Have you felt at any point pressure not to be Ms. Holgate's support person?
No, not at all, no.
Has anybody suggested to you that you should stay out of this inquiry, that you're not needed?
Not at all.
Senator Carr, have you got some questions?
Thank you. So you felt, obviously we approached you about having to be subpoenaed today, so you've got an ongoing role with Australia Post. Can you just, for the hand side record, what is your formal position with Australia Post, although you're not appearing in that capacity today?
So I'm the Executive General Manager of People and Culture for Australia Post.
And that's what I thought. In terms of Australia Post's understanding and your, in a professional capacity, concepts like duty of care are often used. Given that you're the only person that's provided personal support, how well do you think Australia Post has demonstrated a duty of care to Ms. Holgate?
I think that's a difficult question, Senator, as I am, I mean, I bring myself to the role, but I am the Executive General Manager of Australia Post. So in my capacity in that role, I was very much Christine's support person.
However, these are, you've described as harrowing, I think is the word you used, harrowing? I mean, we are professional politicians. I'll put it to you that we're not unfamiliar with the harrowing nature of a media storm. We're not unfamiliar with the intense pressure that parliamentary combat involves. We're not unfamiliar with the enormous personal pressure that that brings. But as an official, a public official, as a public servant, I would say that it is unusual for a senior executive to be abused on the floor of the Parliament. You're not unfamiliar with tough questions that I asked, I have asked you and asked officials, that's, as I say, that's part of our job, but it is extremely unusual to have that level of personal attack. Does that not require a level of duty of care from the organisation if, in those sorts of circumstances, given just how unusual the events were surrounding the question time on the 22nd of October?
Absolutely, Senator. And from the point that we left the Senate that day, in my role as Executive General Manager of Australia Post, I, one, travelled back, we should have been flying back that day. There was a lot of media attention, so Christine's husband organised for us to travel back privately in a car. I chose, and Christine asked me, but I chose to travel back with her. I stayed with her till we got home. I made sure she was, she got home safely. And like I say, I would speak to Christine three, four, five times a day throughout the, what was a very harrowing weekend, that first weekend for her. And I know she's mentioned this in her submission, you know, I think the media attention that that got, and on the Saturday morning, which I would describe as her very lowest point, when she was depicted in the media as a prostitute. That was her lowest point and I was there. I organised for Christine, I was extremely concerned for Christine on that Saturday morning and I organised for her to have support, medical support and counselling support. So again, all of that, I do feel that in my capacity and my role, I do feel Australia Post...
Please, I'm not criticising you for that. I'm putting to you something broader than that. I mean, you in a personal capacity have taken that up, I think is what the word, you know, you were the only one that did. No one from the board? It would seem that, were there many other executives that took an interest in her welfare?
Of course. I mean, from the minute it happened, everyone was concerned for Christine's welfare.
Concerned is one thing. And I say that, I mean, I'm not, I'm not in any way casting aspersions on your immediate human response to this situation. I'm putting it in the context where I think there was some empathy, considerable empathy, because we understand what it's like to be put through the mill. And it's all too often, I think, in political circles, there's little regard for the personal costs that we inflict on each other in, so what we call quaintly, public debate. It's, it just troubles me that Christine Holgate was subject to this assault, what she describes as bullying, this, you know, this extraordinary attack on her by the Prime Minister of Australia. And there was so little response, other than to get her out the door as soon as possible. And from all we can see, illegally. I mean, there is no direction was ever issued, was there? You never saw a direction in writing, a legal direction for her to stand down?
As I've said, Senator, I was never involved in that correspondence, no.
No, so frankly, but you were not aware that there was any...
I understand.
No legal force, other than the statement the Prime Minister and the Minister made to the effect that she was to be summarily dismissed. No procedural fairness, no natural justice, no inquiry even. And what there was, was this secret report, which was supposed to be into the management of the board, which has actually becomes an inquisition into her. I'm just wondering how that fits with Australia Post's culture of understanding of the welfare to its own employees?
Senator, all I can say is that we do care for our employees greatly. We have many policies, processes, procedures in place to care for our people and to make sure that our people have the right care and support. This is an unprecedented situation with, certainly with the CEO of the organisation. But I certainly feel that Australia Post is absolutely supports people and has a duty of care. And I can only stress that in my role, it's hard to separate me as a person from the role that I'm in.
All right, okay, fair enough. But I want to repeat, I'm not in any way casting aspersions upon you, because you seem to be the only one that's done the right thing here, in terms of providing proper support for a person who's in considerable distress. Now, we have had, you know, senators, I used to sit next to a senator that was subject to one of these attacks and went home and, you know, inflicted self-harm. There's a picture of a former member outside the barber shop downstairs who was successful in, if we call it that. So, you know, the cost of this type of confrontation is horrific. We pay little attention to it. So I do commend you for the steps that you've taken, but I just wonder, what else was done?
I think the, it's difficult, I was the primary contact. It doesn't mean there was a lot of support behind me. I was always the primary contact for Christine. And, you know, I think that people, certainly people on the board did care and people in the management team did care and people reached out to Christine and people text Christine and people, you know, care about Christine deeply. But I was always the primary contact.
Senator Hanson?
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming. It's been hard on you, I know that. And I'm aware that you were asked not to come because it would be a conflict of interest. Is that true?
I don't think I ever said it was a conflict of interest. I think my understanding that...
Australia Post thought that you being here might be a conflict of interest.
I don't, I don't think it's a conflict at all. I'm here, my understanding was that I was invited and I said I prefer to give my evidence in writing and the Senate wanted me here today, so I'm here today.
And I'm pleased to see you here as well. There's been some conflicting evidence in submissions that have been put forward and you were with, on the 22nd of October, after it was stated in Parliament, on the floor of Parliament, question time, about the standing down and the comments from the Prime Minister. And it was a frenzy, media frenzy, and you were with Ms. Holgate at that time, that it was organised to actually drive back to Sydney from Canberra and you were with her that whole time in the car. During that trip back, are you aware of any telephone conversations with the Chair?
I don't recall specifically conversations with the Chair. The Chair certainly called me to speak to Christine and at the time, she was on the phone to Tony Nutt and I certainly passed the message to Christine to speak to the Chair. I'm aware that subsequently from telephone records, that there did seem to be connections with the two numbers, but I don't recall specifically, Senator, there were so many phone calls going on that day, as you can imagine.
Actually, Ms. Holgate was on the phone quite a considerable amount of time to Tony Nutt?
Yes, she was.
Right. At the time, at one time, pointed the Chair, Bartalmo, did he actually ring Ms. Holgate and she actually gave the phone to you? You spoke to him?
I don't recall that happening. I certainly recall speaking to the Chair and the Chair was trying to contact Christine. So my recollection would be that the Chair called me on my phone because Christine's phone was busy. I don't recall it, that's not to say it didn't happen, I don't recall it.
According to Ms. Holgate's mission, she arrived home about between seven, seven thirty that night?
Yes.
She took no further phone calls, never spoke to anyone. There was no phone call between the Chair and her after you left Parliament House in that, in the car ride? Yet in the Chair's submission on 2.1.4, he said that he, the Chair discussed, after the discussions with the Portfolio Minister, referred to above and before the government comments in question time referred to below, the Chair discussed the matter by telephone with Ms. Holgate, summarised as follows. The Chair and Ms. Holgate discussed the matter generally, reflecting on the questions asked of and responses given by Ms. Holgate at the 22nd of October 2020 hearing, the Chair advised Ms. Holgate of his discussions with the Portfolio Minister. The Chair advised Ms. Holgate the board would be meeting later that afternoon to discuss the matter and the Chair advised Ms. Holgate that he would be in contact again to discuss the matter further once the board had met. What, she's saying there was no discussions and her understanding is that she was not prepared to stand down, she would give two weeks' annual leave, take the two weeks' annual leave. But the Chair, in his submission, states that he convinced her to actually stand down and took that to the board and the board then were of that understanding. But that's not your understanding.
As I've said earlier, Senator, I was hearing one side of the conversation. I certainly heard Christine requesting leave. I certainly heard Christine's...
Yeah, but she never had that conversation in the car with Bartalmo.
She was, she had that conversation with Tony Nutt.
But it wasn't with the Chair.
I don't recall, I do not recall that conversation, not to say it didn't happen, I don't recall.
There was no conversation. Because you don't recall a conversation, because the only conversation you recall is she had it with Tony Nutt, who was actually advising her that she should actually take two weeks' annual leave. And that was the course of the conversations and the emails and that was her final stance. And that was relayed back to the Chair, but that's not what he took back to the board. He actually told the board that he convinced her to actually stand down and at no point did she ever want to stand down. She wanted to continue in her position.
So just to be clear, Senator Hanson is repeating the evidence that was given this morning. I guess the question is, do you accept, do you accept that version of events?
I think that's, that's difficult for me...
Well, all you can say is whether you're aware of phone, telephone conversations.
I was not aware. I certainly do not recall a conversation where Christine agreed to stand down. I don't recall that conversation.
So did that, when you say don't recall, are you saying it didn't happen?
I'm saying I don't recall. I don't, I don't know whether that happened or whether it did.
Fifty-seven calls, fifty-seven calls on the day.
Just trying to get clarification. There were, there were hundreds of calls going on. I mean, it never stopped from the minute we got into the car to the minute we got out of the car. So there were so many conversations and, you know, I don't recall that that conversation took place.
When the Chair was on the phone at different times, were you otherwise occupied? Were you on the phone quite often, so?
No, I was on the phone. So I had, people from the executive team were contacting me, yeah.
So were there many times or occasions where Ms. Holgate would have been speaking on the phone, but you just weren't taking that in or hearing it because you were otherwise occupied?
We were both, I remember us both being on the phone together at the same time and sort of turning away so that we could, we could actually concentrate on the calls.
But to be clear, no one has been able to give us any evidence thus far that this phone call occurred. You can't give us evidence that it did? Ms. Holgate says it didn't. There's a question as to why we haven't been able to have access to the... There's a question as to why we haven't been able to have access to the phone records. So just, you don't have to agree to something if you don't know. Okay?
But perhaps I can assist with the, just a direct extract from the evidence from the submissions, it might help you a little bit, I trust. You never know in this game. There were two, this is from the submission from Ms Holgate. And she, this is where she talks about the 57 phone calls on the way back. She lists the details of them. And she says, "The two calls on my record of the Chair's phone are at 4:27 for 2 minutes and 51 seconds that day and at 5:00, and at 5:50pm for 4 minutes and 25 seconds. I do recall seeing I had missed calls from the Chair while on other calls and I called back and passed my phone to Sue Davies as I did not want to speak to him, as I was extremely disappointed at what happened." Now, that doesn't mean that the call was answered, it simply says that she phoned back and passed the phone to you. "The two calls appear to be calls to the Chair," referring to in his media statement on the 7th of April, "as they are the exact same time. This suggests to me there were no other incoming calls from the Chair answered by me or Australia Post would have detailed them." So that's on page four of a supplementary submission.
Does that sound about right to you, Ms Davies?
As I said previously, I don't recall, I do recall speaking to the Chair. I do recall the Chair asking me how Christine was and I said she was extremely upset and extremely disappointed and very distressed. We absolutely had that conversation and he absolutely asked me to get Christine to call him back. I'm really sorry, I do not, I don't remember the point where phones were swapped. That's not to say it didn't happen. Like I say, it was, it was really, it was a very upsetting day for everyone.
Okay. Have you got any final questions, Senator Hanson?
Yeah.
So we'll move on and bring the Chair before us as well.
The way that Ms Holgate has been treated by Australia Post, and you're in Human Services, so you deal with the employees and you weren't really happy with the way that she's been treated.
I think the, look, the, I'm disappointed. I'm disappointed with how, how she was treated from the point of the Senate, you know, from that point on, I'm very disappointed to, for a lot of things that have happened over the process. There've been some very dark days for all of us and especially for Christine. I, again, it's hard to separate myself from my role as executive of People and Culture, I mean, as an individual, but, you know, I do believe that, you know, we've, certainly I, we have done everything to try and support Christine through that. I think that different minds look at this differently, you know, and I just think that if we could all reflect and go back and hope that something could have been done differently, I think there's probably lots of things that could have been done differently.
Even to the point, when Ms Holgate wrote a letter, she wanted it to go out to the employees and to the LPOs to explain the situation because she was so passionate about the job that she did, she cared about staff, she cared about the job that she did. And yet, it was the board that refused to send that out and it took them four days and it was because of you going and complaining to them about this letter should go out that they finally did put it out after four days. Is that correct?
So that was a conversation not with me and the board, that was a conversation with the acting CEO at that point. I'm not sure why the decision was not to send that letter out. It was really Christine wanted to write to 36,000 people and just explain what had happened and her decision as to why she was resigning. I saw no harm in that and I also wanted Christine to have the opportunity for people to respond to her as well and thank her and that's exactly what happened and she received many, many responses and, you know, I thought that was really, really important for Christine's state of health and state of mind at the time.
Thank you, Ms Davies. Thanks you too.
Thank you. Ms Davies, thank you for coming today and giving us your evidence. If there is anything extra that you think we need to be aware of, please get in touch with the Secretariat. And if we have any other questions as we go through other witnesses, we may need to come back to you. But I appreciate you coming today.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. We're just going to suspend briefly while we get the next witness in the room, which will be the Chair of Australia Post. Mr Bartolomeo, Debar Bartolomeo, apologies. I understand that information on parliamentary privilege and the protection of witnesses and evidence has been provided to you and I would ask you to state your full name and the capacity in which you appear today. And I understand Mr McDonald is at the table as well and that would be appreciable as well.
Lucia Debar Bartolomeo, and I'm Chair of Australia Post.
Thank you.
Nick McDonald, General Counsel and Corporate Secretary of Australia Post. Thank you, Senator.
Thank you. I now invite you, Mr Chairman, to give us a brief opening statement and then we'll go to some questions. I have no doubt you've heard a bunch of the evidence presented to us this morning and I imagine there's going to be a lot of questions from members around the table. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to make a brief opening statement. I appreciate the opportunity to assist the committee in this inquiry. As you would have seen from our submission, we are treating this process seriously, in line with our longstanding commitment as a government business enterprise to meet all of our obligations with the Parliament. Given the inquiry's substantial focus on the former group CEO and managing director, I would like to provide the committee with some important perspectives. Christine Holgate was a very good chief executive for Australia Post. In our respective roles, I worked with her closely, particularly during the volatility and uncertainty created by last year by the COVID-19 pandemic. Against this backdrop, we faced some of the biggest challenges in our 200-year history, including soaring demand for parcel deliveries and a hastening of the decline of letters business at a time when our operating environment was hampered by COVID restrictions. Despite all this, Australia Post remains a robust business and last year delivered a profit that can be reinvested in our business for the benefit of the community. Christine's leadership was integral to this outcome. More broadly, during her three years at Australia Post, Christine implemented more, implemented important innovations and reforms that continued to transform the transformation of our operations, helping to grow and strengthen the business. With this context, it is reasonable to ask how we got here today. On the 2nd of November last year, Australia Post lost a dedicated and highly valued CEO. The board was very disappointed to see Christine go. When Christine agreed to stand aside on the 22nd of October, my objective was, subject to the findings of the investigation, to have Ms Holgate back, performing her role as soon as possible. But as articulated by Christine in her letter of resignation, regrettably, given recent events, I've come to the view that my continuation as chief executive is untenable. While the board understood her rationale, I want to be clear that neither I nor the board sought or encouraged Christine's resignation. The events that Christine referred to was not so much the purchase of the four watches as reward for four executives who had secured a valued Banker Post deal, a deal that would prove highly supportive for the long-term viability of many of our LPOs. Rather, it was the increasingly acute public scrutiny, including media focus and commentary from right across the community spectrum, that has developed on the back of our estimates, that developed on the back of the estimates appearance and showed no signs of diminishing. You are likely to be aware that after Christine resigned last year, I told Senator Estimates that if I'd been at the Chair at the time of the giving of the watches, I would have vetoed the purchase of the watches. As the Maddox Report ultimately found, the purchase of the watches was inconsistent with both the obligations imposed by the PGPA Act on us and public expectations. Again, Christine, in her public statement on the 2nd of November last year, acknowledged this. "I deeply regret, quote, 'A decision made two years ago has caused so much debate and distraction and I appreciate the optics of the gift involved do not meet the pub test for many.'" Christine's hope was that through her resignation, the organisation could remain fully focused on serving its customers. I view the purchase of the watches as an error of judgment made in good faith from an otherwise highly effective CEO. I also recognise the circumstances surrounding the departure of the former CEO were unusual and difficult for Christine and everyone involved. All the way through the process, Christine's welfare was, remained a priority for Australia Post and we ensured that the organisation continued to support her during what has clearly been a trying time. The legacy of a business leader is often judged by the simple question around whether the business was left in a better shape than when they started. Australia Post is clearly a better, stronger organisation thanks to Christine's contribution and we sincerely wish her all the best in her future endeavours. Yesterday, Australia Post announced the appointment of Paul Graham as the group CEO and managing director. The announcement followed an endorsement by Cabinet last week. Paul is currently the Chief Supply Chain Officer at Woolworths Group. He was chosen to be our next CEO after exhaustive search for the best candidate to lead Australia Post through the next phase of our transformation programme. The board selected Paul because his experience in logistics supply chain over 40 years in Australia and internationally. We were also impressed by Paul's track record as senior leader at Woolworths and his ability to motivate and lead a national logistics team. Australia Post is a well-run organisation with strong culture built in on the dedication and commitment of our 75,000 strong extended workforce. Paul's job will be to maintain the momentum in a challenging environment. I'm joined today by Nick McDonald, group general counsel and company secretary. I want to reaffirm Australia Post is committed to fully cooperating with the committee as it competes, completes its important work and I'm happy to take your questions. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Now, I understand Senator Mackenzie has questions and she's not able to stick around, so I'm going to, with the acceptance of the rest of the committee, go to Senator Mackenzie and then we'll go around the table.
Could we, Mr Debar Bartolomeo, hear his statement?
Yes. Sorry, Senator Mackenzie, just hang on a second. Could we have your statement table, please?
Yes, we can.
Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Mackenzie, you've got the floor.
Thank you very much, Chair, and I thank the committee for their indulgence. Chair, interesting to see you again. You've had an explosive day, I imagine, listening to the evidence of Ms Holgate this morning. I just want to return to a line of questioning we started to explore at last, estimates around Ms Holgate acting within her authority as CEO, whether you as Chair or not would have sanctioned the purchasing of these gifts for senior executives. She did operate within her authority, as the Maddox Review found, did she not?
There was no policies that she contravened, there's no doubt about that.
That's right.
But the-
Thank you. Just sorry, Chair, that's my understanding too, but in her submission, and I think Ms Camp, Camp this morning also spoke to this, this is not a unique situation in Australia Post. Ms Holgate, in her submission, talks about employees receiving watches, cars, tickets to the Olympics, et cetera, as, you know, incentives for good work for executives. Is the case?
I'm sorry, I missed that. The last part?
Well, is it the case that within Australia Post, the seat of non-financial incentives by senior executives is business as usual? This is not a unique situation for Australia Post.
I think the value of these gifts is a unique situation, but you're right-
So is the value of these gifts less or more than the tickets to the Olympics by previous CEOs handed out? Other watches purchased, the cars?
With regard to the previous CEO and times that I wasn't there, I can't make any comments. I don't know what was given, what was received or what the values were.
So just to be clear, Mr Chairman, you actually don't know whether this is business as usual or not?
That's right.
Certainly, certainly the investigation we looked at showed that while there are rewards being given, most of our policies very much limit those rewards. These gifts were exceptions to that.
Senator Mackenzie-
Mr Debar Bartolomeo is evidenced to this committee by licensed post office owners themselves about quite excessive gifts given out by the former CEO, the $5 million man, Mr Favour. If you can't provide us the answers we need, can I encourage you and indeed insist that you go back to your organisation, talk to your CFO, talk to people that were around at the time, look at the accounts and give back to this committee with what is, I would argue, and the evidence absolutely suggests, business as usual for Australia Post are these sort of non-financial incentives to senior executives. And if, Ms Holgate's efforts in this regard are a drop in the ocean when compared with previous examples. So if you could take on notice-
I'd take that on notice, thank you.
If, as you say, Ms Holgate and the Maddox Report bears out, acted within the boundaries of her CEO, didn't breach internal policies, can you explain to us why she was stood down?
First of all, she did not act within the boundaries of the AP's GP Act, as she was obliged to do so, as the Maddox Report identified. And she wasn't stood down, she stood aside and I strongly-
What's the difference, sir? And I've noticed that difference between stood aside and stood down. What's the difference?
What? Well, what I wanted and had lots of discussion on this on the afternoon in question, wanted her to stand aside for four weeks for the duration of the, for the duration of the investigation so she could concentrate and fully work on the, in preparing for that investigation, while at the same time we could appoint someone else to do the, on an acting basis, to do the CEO role, as we were in the midst of planning and preparing to execute the largest parcel delivery exercise that we'd ever had at a time when COVID-
I understand, I understand. I'm trying to get to the bottom of the difference between stood aside and stood down. You're saying you never sought her to stand down, you only sought her to stand aside. Is that correct?
To stand aside for a period of four weeks.
So you didn't make any representation to Minister Fletcher that she- Right. So you didn't make any representation to Minister Fletcher that she not be stood aside? You didn't fight for Christine, given that she was the CEO that you've spoken about in your opening statement today?
When the minister first rang me early that afternoon, post the question time, he advised me that, one, he was going to instigate an independent review of the circumstances, investigation in the circumstances surrounding these watches. He wanted me and the board to support that investigation, as required, and he wanted, he would like Christine to stand aside during the term of the investigation.
Sorry, Senator Mackenzie.
Did you, sorry, Chair, did you actually make a representation to Minister Fletcher at that time that standing Christine aside, Holgate aside, was not required?
I questioned whether that was necessary, but clearly came to the conclusion that it was in Christine's and Australia Post's best interest if she did, primarily for the reason that I answered earlier. I wanted Christine to focus on that, and I wanted to see who could focus on the business of running Australia Post at a time when we were going to have the largest volume of parcel business ever experienced, ever, something like 50% higher than the previous Christmas, which already was a record, and doing so under COVID restrictions that still applied.
Finding 10 of the Maddox report states various interviewees have said Australia Post has commenced or will shortly commence an internal review in relation to matters such as its policies applying to give some benefits. I mean, Ms Holgate's lost her job and has made significant representations to this committee about the destruction of her reputation as a result of fallout. Didn't breach any internal policies, in your own words. So where is that internal review up to, given the enormity of the consequences for the former CEO?
Independent of the independent investigation that was taking place by Maddox, the board immediately after that asked for a review of all our policies and procedures to see exactly what the circumstances were and how that may be reviewed to better inform. So for instance, Christine Holgate this morning talked about the fact that her expenses were approved by the Chief Financial Officer. And they were, so that was independent to her. However, best practice is that the Chair should approve the CEO's report, rather than someone who reported to her. So that's one of the changes that, for instance, we've made. We've identified a total of 32 separate actions to further strengthen and improve our processes and procedures around these matters, and-
So you really needed to change the policy, didn't you? You didn't actually need to change a CEO?
We never changed the CEO, Senator. We didn't want-
Well, that's not the evidence. That's not the evidence of Ms Holgate to this committee today.
It is my evidence to this committee now. In my opening remark, I said we never wanted to lose Ms Holgate as our CEO.
Well, you did very little to try and keep her.
And your opening statement was very clear. So do you think if she hadn't have resigned, that Ms Holgate should still be CEO of Australia Post?
Yes, I believe she could have been.
You're willing to provide Ms Holgate-
Hang on a second.
-the evidence today?
Hang on a second, Senator-
Are you willing to provide Ms Holgate with a public apology for how she's been treated?
I think Christine Holgate's been treated abysmally, but I believe the board and management did the right things by her. I know there was talk about not getting this-
So no apology?
Sorry?
No apology for Ms Holgate from Australia Post?
I don't believe Australia Post owes her an apology, no, but I do believe she's been badly treated.
But it's all somebody else's doing, is it?
Well, I think the environment that was created at the time, from that afternoon on through Parliament and the media thereafter, and lots of everyone else who bought in, yes, certainly, created a set of circumstances that made her job and her life very difficult.
Does the Prime Minister owe Christine Holgate an apology?
I'm not here to talk on behalf of anybody else as to who owes an apology, but all I'm saying is I understand the hurt that she felt and appreciate it, and we tried to do as much as possible to assist her. I mean, Sue Davies, who was giving evidence here before me, was provided as the person to assist. It was Australia Post who gave her the time and the permission to do that role, and I think she did it very well, within the limits that could be had. I mean, I certainly was very conscious of her state of being. I spoke to her the next morning, on the Friday morning after the 22nd. We had a lengthy conversation, asking how she was. I had a similar conversation on the, sorry, I attempted to have a similar conversation on the Sunday morning, but she didn't take my call. She then texted me. And if I could refer, in fact, to Christine Holgate's own submission, I called her and she messaged me, "Lucio, my apologies, I have not picked up. I'm trying to preserve my mental wellbeing. I'm aware Sue has sent the letter. I will read it, as ever, will support the organisation in any way I can, Christine." I responded in text, "Christine, you have nothing to apologise for. I was calling to see how you are. I can't envisage how difficult this is for you, after all you've done for Australia Post. Can we provide you with any assistance? Christine, just remember there are many of us who hold you in the highest regard and always will. Do what is best for you. Call whenever you want, Lucio." That was my text to her.
Thank you so much for that evidence.
Senator Mackenzie has another question, and then we'll go around the room.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And I'm really going to the business questions now at the moment. We've heard some evidence about the BCG report, which the last time we saw each other, Mr Debatolomeo, you couldn't quite recall whether you'd seen a final draft, but I'm pretty sure you've seen the final draft. And we know the contents of that report really went to significant structural changes for Australia Post that would have very much detrimental impact on rural and regional community post offices. I'm going to Ms Holgate's additional submission from this morning, where Australia Post received a letter from both shareholders' ministers acknowledging your own letter from the 24th of February, encouraging further cost savings consistent with those from the BCG review. One of the initial steps is for the shareholders' ministers envisage that, and I'm quoting, that BCG's findings should be taken into account as the corporate plan process is developed. So my question is, given what we heard about what was contained in the BCG report, can you guarantee, we've got 2,500,000 LPOs out in the community and rural and regional Australia, that Australia Post not divest of your parcel division, and that you will guarantee no job losses in retail post offices as a result of the adoption of the cost measures that you're incorporating into your corporate planning process?
A few comments about the BCG report first, and I'll come to your latter questions. Yes, I did see a draft of the BCG report. It was presented at a board, at a lengthy presentation, lots of slides, et cetera. That report established a number of potential options that should be considered in any reform or potential opportunities to enhance the performance of Australia Post. There were no recommendations in that report, and if that was the report that was sent to the government, then it doesn't have any recommendations on what should take place. It simply identifies a number of-
I know it doesn't have specific recommendations. We know it doesn't have specific recommendations to that, but it does outline ways to cut costs.
Correct.
And one of the grave concerns for LPOs is that they will once again bear the brunt of cost-cutting measures by Australia Post.
Okay, well-
Can you guarantee that will not be the case?
I can guarantee that the work we're doing today with our corporate plan, the corporate plan that is currently in place and the new corporate plan, as our annual strategic planning process is in place, we have absolutely no plans to change the LPOs and particularly the rural and regional arrangements. They are not part and parcel-
So there won't be any job losses as a result, rural and regional community post?
Well, we certainly won't be closing or reducing any of the LPOs. Now, whether they bring about any job losses-
They make business decisions because it's unviable.
Okay, hang on. Senator Mackenzie, we are going to have to go on to other senators, so just-
Thank you.
Mr Chairman, can I ask, you said you first rang the minister after question time on the day of the 22nd of October, is that correct?
He rang me-
He rang you, did he?
To be precise.
What time was that?
Sorry. I had probably two or three calls, but the first time was 1:09.
That's before question time?
Yes, and then another one at 1:30.
That's before question time as well?
Correct. This is with, sorry, with the minister?
With the minister?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And at that point, did you ensure that the minister understood the background to the gifting of those watches?
No, because I had no background on the gifting of those watches, other than what I'd heard at Senate Estimates earlier that day.
What did you say to the minister at both 1pm and 1:30? They're two very close phone calls.
I, as I said earlier in answering Ms Kitchen's question, I took on board his position that I wanted to, that he wanted us to support the investigation. There would be an investigation, he wanted us to support the investigation, and he wanted us to look at standing Christine down. I queried whether that was what he really wanted. He said, "Look, I'm going to come back to you", and we had the latter discussion, where that was all reaffirmed.
So the minister asked you to stand Christine Holgate aside?
Yes.
At the one, when you spoke to him at 1pm?
Yes.
At 1:09?
1:09.
At 1:09.
And-
And then when he called again at 1:30?
And confirmed at 1:30.
That is what he wanted you to do? At any point in that conversation, did he say he'd spoken to the Prime Minister?
No.
Have you spoken to the Prime Minister during this day?
I've never spoken to the Prime Minister, Senator.
You've never spoken to the Prime Minister?
No.
Not once in your life?
Not once in my life.
Okay. So at 1:30, when it was confirmed that the minister was asking you to stand Ms Holgate aside?
Yes.
Did he say that that was at the direction of the Prime Minister, or that he'd had a conversation with other members of the Cabinet?
No. What he did say is that he had a conversation with his fellow shareholder ministers, so that it was coming from both shareholder ministers.
Did you regard that as a direction?
No.
What did you regard, how did you categorise it?
Well, it certainly wasn't a direction, but clearly a strong desire on the shareholder minister's part.
But he asked you, yeah. Hang on. So he called you at 1:09 and said, "I want you to stand Ms Holgate aside". He called you again at 1:30 and said, "Just confirming, I want you to stand Ms Holgate aside."
I queried whether that was the best course of action. He said, "Let me talk to my other shareholder ministers", and he did, came back and confirmed the initial position.
But you don't take that as a direction?
No.
But when the Prime Minister says he's been instructed to do so, you don't regard that as a direction? He says publicly, that is in the floor of the House of Representatives, you don't think that's a direction?
Well, just to get the timing right, Senator, following those two discussions I had with the minister, I organised through Nick, our company secretary, to try and organise a meeting of the board that afternoon to discuss, this is clearly an important issue that had arisen, and we first met at?
At 4pm.
4pm. I had not heard-
So who's we? Who's we? We just say we first met, the board?
The board.
The board met, sorry, yes.
Via teleconference?
Teleconference, of course.
And were all members of the board there?
Yes.
And Mr McDonald was there as well? Mr McDonald was there as well?
Yes, as company-
No, I wasn't in attendance for that meeting. That was conducted as a private session.
Yeah, that's right, yes.
Was there minutes of this meeting?
Subsequent meeting, minutes.
Who took the minutes?
So I recorded the minutes based on instructions provided by the Chair after the meeting.
But you weren't there?
But the Chair took notes, I think, is what's-
And then you had write-up the minutes later. So you didn't actually, you weren't there in person to actually hear what was said? And you took the minutes in the meeting?
No, Senator, what I said was-
Just tell me how this happened.
So Senator Hanson, thank you. I drafted minutes based on instructions provided by the Chair after the meeting. So we had a telephone conversation, he told me what had happened during the meeting. I recorded that in a draft and then provided it to the Chair for review, and ultimately it went to the board for review and confirmation in the way that board minutes ordinarily do. It just happened that this was a private session that I wasn't in attendance at.
Can I ask, I think I asked you on the 23rd of March if you could table some minutes? Are you able to do that today?
Sorry, I don't-
We discussed minutes of the, we discussed minutes- I don't have any, I actually don't have any responses back from you yet at all, from Estimates.
So the responses to Estimates on the 23rd of March are in preparation. We have drafts, they have not yet been submitted to our shareholder department. But look, to answer your question, rather than sort of getting diverted on those questions, which we will respond to shortly, whilst it's unusual to produce minutes, given the confidential nature of those documents, given that those minutes relate purely to the matters that we're dealing with in this inquiry, we can produce those and we'll table a copy of those. They're consistent with what's in our submission.
Today?
Okay, can I?
Today?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Can we have them now, so we can review them?
Yeah, so we'll organise them to be emailed through.
Well, no, no, if you give them to the secretary, they'll photocopy them for us.
Okay, can I just, I just want to clarify something. So there was a, you convened a board meeting at 4pm?
4pm, yes.
Was there any subsequent board meetings on that day?
There was one board meeting, but we took breaks, and we had two breaks in between.
How long did this meeting go for?
If you bear with me. We started at 4 and went for-
So I can assist perhaps?
Yeah, please.
I've got the details in front of me. So the minutes recorded, the meeting began at 4pm and concluded at 6:20pm. There were breaks between 4:15pm and 4:45pm and 5pm to 6pm. So in effect, the board meeting was run across three sessions, from 4 to 4:15, 4:45 to 5, and 6 to 6:20pm.
Can I just, Mr Debatolomeo, did you take any phone calls during those breaks?
Yes.
And whom, with whom did you speak?
There, we've got a schedule list of-
Is it possible, could I ask you, Mr Debatolomeo, if you could table your, not the text messages, but just the incoming and outgoing phone calls from that, let's say, from the 22nd of, yeah. Are you going to table, can you table that for us?
Senator Kitchen, perhaps if I can address that. We have a summary of calls between mobile phone numbers for Ms Holgate and Mr Debatolomeo. So those have been derived from records obtained from Telstra of outgoing calls from each of those phones. What we're advised by Telstra is that they can provide records of outgoing calls to the account holder of those phones.
I think if you get a detailed Telstra bill, you can see incoming, outgoing, you can also see the cell. You can see the cell you're in. I know, I've discovered this evidence myself, so I know what you can do.
So all I can report is what I was told second-hand by Telstra.
Yes, so you would be able to get the phone bill?
Yes, so Australia Post is the account holder for Ms Holgate's phone. We obtained from Telstra at Ms Holgate's request a record of outgoing calls on the 22nd of October. Well, Telstra wasn't able to provide a record of incoming calls, and the advice that we got was that that would require a relevant legal process, like a subpoena.
But you don't need to do that with the Chair. What you can do with the Chair is just ask the Chair for the record of incoming and outgoing phone calls and any relevant texts.
I think we'll have to take that on notice, but perhaps if I can just complete. We do have records of outgoing calls on the 22nd of October from each of those phones, and we've got a summary of the calls between those two phone numbers. And we've got a summary of the calls between those two phone numbers. So we can table that summary and we can table those reports provided by Telstra. And as I said, the one in respect of Ms. Holgate's number was something that was provided to her previously.
Those phones calls that you're saying actually happened between Ms. Holgate and yourself, and I presume you, Mr. De Bartolomeo, that it actually was with you. Did you actually speak to Christine Holgate yourself after 4 o'clock that afternoon?
Absolutely, absolutely did speak to her. Two occasions, her calling me. And then two further occasions, me calling her.
What time?
Okay, the two, this is in what's going to be tabled, but for the purpose of the discussion now. She rang me at 16:27, rang me again at 17:50 or 5:50. I rang her at 6:38, sorry, and that's it, 6:38. The next one was next morning.
Right. Wasn't one of those calls that she put to Christine Holgate? It was actually, you spoke to Sue Davis?
No, I spoke to Sue Davis separately when I rang her direct.
You tried to ring her as well on her phone?
On her phone, that's right.
That's right. And then you rang Christine Holgate, who was in the car, and she said she couldn't talk to you. At this time also, which is in evidence from Christine Holgate, she had numerous phone calls and texts from Tony Nutt.
And you're right, I was trying to get on to Christine, was having trouble. I rang Sue, who I knew was with her.
So you may have made these phone calls, but it doesn't necessarily mean that you actually hooked up and spoke to her.
If I may finish my answer, I asked Sue to ask Christine to ring me. She did ring me. We did speak. I spoke to her. I didn't speak to Sue again. I spoke to her. We had both at the 4:27 time and the 5:50 time, we spoke about it. Look, there's no doubt Christine was very reluctant to step aside, stand aside.
Correct.
She wanted to stay in the role. I said, it will be far better for both her and us if she stood aside and just simply for four weeks dealt with the investigation that was going to take place. And I could put Rodney Boys, who ultimately we did, as acting CEO, take care of the operational issues during that time.
At what time did you tell the Board that you had convinced Ms. Holgate?
Okay.
That she would stand aside?
The third, the third of those meetings starting 6 o'clock, yes.
What confuses me is that if she was having conversations with Tony Nutt and sending back emails to say that she wanted two weeks' annual leave, and that was her stance, why would she turn around and say to you that she would agree to stand down and that's what you took back to the Board? And that was never the case?
Senator, one of the discussions I did have with her was to say, Christine, why are you seeking to take two weeks' leave? First of all, two weeks was not kind of going to cover the four-week period of the investigation. And secondly, why clear your leave at your expense when in fact we're asking you to do this body of work to prepare yourself for the investigation on full pay?
She would be on full pay anyway, so the whole point was.
No, no, if she was on leave, she was clearing a leave.
She was on leave, she would have still been on leave. It was her decision to take leave. You needed her out of that position so you could put someone in as the acting in that position if she was stood down.
She stood aside.
And she denies the fact that she actually had that conversation with you.
I'm just going to go back to an order. Senator Carr.
Can I just come back to what was said to you, Mr. Chairman? By the minister? And the two phone calls that I think you've indicated, there was a bit of confusion early on whether it was before question time or after question time. We've cleared that up, it's before question time.
This is before question time, yes.
Now, the minister in the House said that I have asked, I've asked the Chair to inform the Chief Executive that she will be asked to stand aside during the course of the investigation.
Correct.
That's what he said.
That's correct.
The Prime Minister said, the Chief Executive has been instructed to stand aside, and if she doesn't wish to do so, she can go. Now, these are clearly before any board meetings taken place. And I'm wondering why you wouldn't consider that to be a direction?
It wasn't a statement made to us. In fact, I wasn't aware of that till sometime later, certainly after the board meeting. I was not listening to question time.
You might say that, but in your minutes, you say here that the, are the questions that the recent evidence of the Senate, the board noted, this is, if I know that, on your, the minutes you've just handed up?
Yes.
Recent evidence, the Senate Committee, Estimates and Media and Political Commentary, the comments made by the Prime Minister and the Minister for Communications in question time on the 22nd of October.
Yes.
Now, I'm just wondering how that statement, and I know these proceedings can be somewhat gruelling, but, and I'm not trying to make your life any more difficult, but I'm just, it does seem to me considerably, there's a considerable gap between what you've just said and what the minutes say that you've just handed up and what I would have thought would be a normal reading of the English language interpretation of a Prime Minister saying, the Chief Executive has been instructed to stand aside, and if she doesn't wish to do so, then she can go. I would have thought that was a fairly clear direction.
We didn't take it as a direction, but we understood what was said.
I see, you understood it. Okay, now, the reason I say that is because there are quite specific legal requirements for governments in terms of issuing directions to Australia Post. Is that, that's the case?
That's the case, and that's why I say there was.
That's why you say that?
That's right.
And can you go through, in your understanding, of what the powers of a minister are to issue a direction?
I, I'll take that question on notice. I understand, I understand the notion, however, that there are formal processes for a direction to be given. The minister didn't give me, I certainly didn't interpret it as a direction because I knew those formal processes hadn't taken place.
So I just want to get to the guts of this because if your interpretation is pending a formal letter, that is, well, you shouldn't have had the board meeting. See, the whole question arises as to what is the nature of a formal direction? Because under the Act and Section 49 of the Australian Postal Communications Act, a Minister for Communication can give you a direction, but he has to do so in a certain way. And furthermore, he has to provide that in, has to publicly declare that. That's all true, isn't it?
Correct.
In fact, there's been no formal directions to the Board in 10 years.
Agreed. It's a very rare, in my time.
A very rare event. It's an extremely rare event for the Prime Minister to stand in the House of Representatives and demand that the Chief Executive be stood aside. It's even rarer event for any government. GBE, I would put to your, GBE, would you not agree?
Certainly, the direction is a very rare event. I agree with you.
But how else would you interpret the Prime Minister's remarks other than a direction, if not formal, clearly public, a public direction to you? And that's why you called the Board?
I called the Board because the minister, the discussion I had with the minister was that they wished to take this investigation and have Christine stand aside while the investigation took place. That's the reason that I called the Board for us to discuss and consider that.
Did Mr. Nutt not inform Ms. Holgate that it was the Prime Minister's wish that she be stood aside?
I did not inform her that at all.
No, no, Mr. Nutt, has he not informed her to that effect? Because that's the evidence before the committee.
I'm not aware that he, I don't recall that at all.
I see.
So there was no formal direction?
No.
However, you followed the wishes of what the minister had put to you, and you put that to the Board. So regardless of a formal direction, not, you did the minister and the Prime Minister's bidding, didn't you?
I think as Board members, you take on board the concerns, the desires, the wishes of the shareholders. That doesn't mean, it doesn't mean that the Board will then do as they wish.
But they did.
But it doesn't also mean that you don't consider all the circumstances, including their desires. But the circumstances that came to the fore that earlier that day.
You would have been surely, in your induction process, briefed on what your powers were as a Chair and your responsibilities as a Chair in terms of these legal requirements to act in accordance with a direction by the shareholder ministers. That'd be part of your induction process, would it not?
Yes.
Yes, that's right. And if you hadn't received that, that doesn't mean you'd ignore the minister. I remember I have served in these capacities for quite some time, so I understand the nature of how this is exercised. But this is an extraordinary event. And that doesn't mean it wasn't issued, it just wasn't formally issued. Is that, is that the nature of your evidence?
No, my evidence is that I'd never considered it as a formal direction. Formal or extraordinary, as you say, Senator.
Did you provide Ms. Holgate with any procedural fairness? Any natural justice provision? Did you seek any legal advice as to what her rights were in that regard? Since there was no direction?
No, what I asked of Ms. Holgate was to agree to stand aside herself for the benefits that I explained earlier.
But you've said here in your minutes that if she did not do that, then consequences would follow, that she would be stood aside.
So she was threatened?
No, if she did not do that, then we would have to consider whether we would take other action.
Well, that's more than consider. I've put it to you, that's not quite what it says. It is, you've made it very clear what the ultimatum is. I'm just wondering, at what point was she provided procedural fairness or any access to natural justice? Given there was no direction from the minister?
The discussion I had with her was for her to volunteer to stand aside, for her to take that decision.
But that's not what the Board says. The Board's made a decision, ultimatum. I'm asking you, what legal rights were extant she made available to her in that context?
What the Board said is, if she did not agree to stand aside, then we would consider alternate action.
That sounds like exactly what the Prime Minister said in question time.
But if she did stand aside, then we didn't need to follow any other action and therefore became irrelevant.
Senator Carr, we do have a question.
Sorry, I apologise for, I think we've got to the nut of the matter, haven't we?
I think we've got, I think that's all very helpful evidence. Senator Van, you have a short series of questions.
Do indeed, thank you, Chair. Mr. De Bartolomeo, yes, so you announced the new CEO, Paul Graham, correct?
Yes, sir, Paul Graham, yes.
Thank you. When did Australia Post commence the search for the new CEO?
We effectively commenced it immediately, by immediate I'm saying, first of all, to find an appropriate headhunter to help us with that task. So that was the first task. But effectively, we started that almost directly after the 2nd of November.
Thank you. And how long did that search take?
It was a very extensive search and we came, we, the Board, came to a conclusion on that search only a few weeks ago.
A few weeks ago, thank you. When was the candidate conceded by government? I assume you.
Yes, I, well, once, once we, the Board came to a conclusion, I contacted the minister and said that we had a candidate that I'd like to put forward. He expressed a desire to meet or talk to the candidate, which was ultimately arranged. And subsequently, our second shareholder minister also had that opportunity. During that process, the paperwork was prepared, due diligence was completed. It went to Cabinet mid-last week.
Mid-last week.
And on the basis of their approval, we then finalised the contract with Paul. He was on holiday celebrating.
Paul being the minister?
I beg your pardon.
Of Paul being the new CEO.
Paul Graham.
Let's be clear, because there's two of them.
I apologise for that, yes, there are two Pauls. Paul actually was, Paul Graham was on holidays in Lilleroo. So we had a number of conversations trying to finalise things. And it wasn't until Saturday morning that we were able to sign the contract next to the contract.
So why wasn't the announcement made once the contract was signed?
I think we needed to prepare, well, once the contract was signed, Paul Graham had to give his notice of resignation to his CEO, which he did later that Saturday. Then our respective comms people, both at Woolworths and at ourselves, prepared the documentation ready for an announcement. And we were essence completed late Sunday, ready to go Monday morning.
It does seem a bit convenient that it was announced the day before this hearing.
It does seem that way, but can I say, it was, they were unrelated matters. We were going to, we were going to go ahead whenever we concluded the matter.
That's right, you didn't care what this committee decided, did you?
Well, as far as we're concerned, by the Senate Estimates, I was questioned a number of times about where we were at, how long it was going to take, why is it taking so long? And from my perspective, we lost our CEO back on the 2nd of November. She resigned, and we started the process, it was very open. It was stated publicly and we completed it.
Did you think at any moment perhaps not announcing it 24 hours before this hearing or less than 24 hours before this hearing probably wasn't a good look?
We were hoping to have the approval process completed sooner, so we could have put more air between the two. But that didn't turn out to be the case. It wasn't intended to.
It'd be reasonable to assume that you'd be criticised whether you did it 24 hours before or 48 hours after or whenever it happened, is that correct?
It's a big comment.
Any further questions, Senator Van?
Thank you, Chair.
Senator Kitchen?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you. Now, I, could I just go, I do want to go back to the timeline of your phone calls.
Yes.
But could I just start with the approval process for credit card expenditure? So my understanding is that previously, so for example, when Mr. Mortimer was the Chair of Australia Post, the approval process for the CEO's credit card was done by the Chair? When did it move from the Chair to the CFO?
I don't know, but it was certainly during, not before I came into it. It was practice before I came in, yes.
Right, okay. Do you think it's appropriate that the CFO and the CEO approve each other's expenditure?
It's not best practice, I don't, and that's why we've changed it.
Okay, when did you change it? After, when did you change it? Presumably after October 22nd.
Yes, after October 22nd, and I was asked the question, what did we do? Not independent of the investigation, what did we do? We reviewed all our processes. We came up with a number of opportunities for improvement. I mean, at the end of the day, all businesses go through a continuous improvement process. We identified opportunities to better manage those particular issues and we've taken those actions, including that particular one.
Okay, so now who's, because, so is the Head of Internal Audit approving the CEOs? Is that how, that used to be the case, they used to be the co-approver?
The CFO was approving the CEOs' expenses.
And she was approving his, so it's a pretty cosy arrangement going on.
Now, I approve the CEOs.
So you've gone back to how it used to be done?
Correct. And to be fair, it's what I'm used to in other boards?
Yes, I was very surprised that that arrangement was in place.
It was just a practice that was in place and.
From Mr. Fuho's time?
Yes.
Could I ask you, I mean, Senator Mackenzie mentioned this and it's certainly in Ms. Holgate's statement, that there really is a culture of largesse at Australia Post. Are you reining that in? So I understand as, really, well, last year for the AFL Grand Final, Australia Post had two boxes at the Grand Final. It was a little confusing for people because I think they were in opposite directions. So there was Australia Post box in both directions at an entry point. Are you reining in this? I have no idea. I would assume that people in a box might be civilised, but they would need to be in separate, why did you need, why do you need two boxes at a Grand Final? What is, why is there this culture of largesse at a taxpayer-funded entity?
First of all, I wasn't aware of any boxes at any Grand Final. I've been made aware of it subsequently, so.
Two boxes?
My view, and in fact, I said we reviewed all of those issues and we've taken action to rein in some of those. And that's not to say that there won't be occasions where we want to entertain key suppliers and customers, customers?
Yeah, no, I understand.
Because it is an important aspect of maintaining appropriate relationships. But as a GBE, and I've been involved with. But as a GBE, and I've, I've been involved with managing GBEs at state and federal level virtually all my career, both as a CEO and as a director, uh, we certainly are far more restrained, or should be far more restrained, than normal commercial businesses and enterprises
Yes, I think that's right.
And I, I accept that, and, and we have done that.
So what are you doing about?
Well, we have already done that, and we'll continue reviewing, uh, what might be appropriate. It's not a question of banning it outright, it's a question of doing what's appropriate.
Um, can I go to your timeline now? So the minister phones you at 1:09, phones you back at 1:30 to confirm. Do you speak to him again that day?
Uh, yes.
When do you speak to him?
Uh, at 3:43.
And what was, so just going back to the 1:09 conversation, at 1:09, he says to you, the CEO needs to stand aside, or words to that effect. Does he mention having spoken to the Prime Minister?
No.
Um, but if that's what he says to you, roundabout, you know, the CEO needs to stand aside?
Yes.
Does he use the word stand aside?
Yes, he did.
So not terminated, or?
No, no, no.
Stand aside?
Stand aside. Uh, my initial concerns, when the minister first asked it, I said, standing aside, our concern wasn't that she was being dismissed or wanted to be dismissed. My concern with the minister was, we've got a really good CEO, we're in the middle of a very significant, uh, transformation programme, how is our CEO going to take the standing aside, you know? It, it's a questioning, no doubt, of what she had done.
And did he frame it that she had to stand aside because there was an investigation?
Yes, very much so.
And, so then you speak to him, at 1:30, he phones back to say-
Confirm.
All good? And, yep, and then we have question time, and in that, in the, the Leader of the Opposition, sorry, let me just get it back up. Just one moment. The Leader of the Opposition asks, uh, Mr., Mr. Fletcher, uh, my question is also addressed to the Minister for Communications, when did the minister first learn about the 2018 purchase of four Cartier watches valued at $12,000 by Australia Post with taxpayer funds? You'll note that he does say 2018, so the minister is aware. I think there's been some suggestion that there's, some people are confused about, uh, what was being suggested when the purchase was made, but it was 2018, as the minister was informed by that question from Mr. Albanese. Mr. Fletcher says, there's a bit of interjection, Mr. Fletcher says, I indicated in my previous answer that I was shocked to discover that, more interjecting, when it was revealed in estimates this morning, um, then he says I've concluded my answer. So, when did you, so he was, so he never knew that this, to your knowledge, he never knew that that happened in 2018?
Uh, to my knowledge, in, relative to the discussion I was having, he certainly, it, it seemed very much to me that he was unaware of it and surprised about it, and that's why he wanted to do this investigation.
And you weren't aware of it either?
I, I, look, I joined, uh, at that point, I, it was just under one year that I'd been there, and certainly wasn't there in 2019.
So you joined 2019?
End of 2019, yeah, November or thereabouts.
Do you think they overreacted?
I think Parliament as a whole overreacted, from the questions that were put by the Opposition to the responses that were given, I think there was a significant-
So, sorry, you don't think that we should have it, because remember, Mr. Boyes was unable to give me a breakdown of expenditure, of credit card expenses, remember that? He said he couldn't give it to me because it was, there was coronavirus on. Now, that would assume that he has to go into an office. I assume Australia Post has the latest bells and whistles in terms of financial software. I was very surprised that Mr. Boyes couldn't answer those questions, and not only that, couldn't answer them in a question on notice. So what I would like to know, so, I don't know whether you've realised this, and it would seem to me that some others at Australia Post might not have realised it, but you are funded by the taxpayer. So asking any questions about expend, any expenditure is, that's the way it goes. And taxpayers have an absolute right to know what you're spending. Because if, do you know what, you, Australia Post really takes no risk. It takes no risk because if something dire happens, you can come back and get some money out of consolidated revenue. That's what being a taxpayer-funded organisation means. So when I ask, when you say there were, there was total overreaction from the Parliament, I think that you misunderstand the role of the entity.
Let, let me just clear that. First of all, I totally support the notion that these are taxpayer funds, and I said so clearly in my statement to Senate Estimates on the 9th of November. I, I think the comment that Christine made that day, in many ways, was a bigger sin than the, than the watches. Um, I, I think she, she was-
So much of a sin, she was, it was right to hound her out of a job?
I, I, we did not hound her out of a job.
But you didn't stand up for her, did you? The minister called you and said, I want her to stand aside. He called you again 15 minutes later and said, I'm still sure I want you to stand her aside. You went into a board meeting without even a formal direction and gave her an ultimatum. At what point did you stand up for natural justice and a fair go?
Having an investigation was, was gonna, that, that investigation was going to take place, it wasn't our decision. It was an independent investigation called by the shareholder minister to be undertaken independently by the departments, using outside legal counsel. That was in place. On the basis that was in place, we came to the judgment, yes, in the background that the minister would like her to stand aside, we came to the judgment, we, the board, that it would be best for her to stand aside, concentrate for those four weeks on those issues, and deal with the more significant operational issues that we had with, uh, an acting CEO.
I know, Senator Henderson has some questions as well, but we just, just on this one, just on this one point, um, will you say, um, oh, sorry, I'm just, I've just lost it there? Sorry, Senator Henderson, do you?
I, I want to keep going through the timeline, so then, so you get, Minister Fletcher, we have question time, he then phones you at-
I'll come back to you.
3:43?
Correct.
3:43. Did you have any, did, when did you first phone Ms. Holgate?
Uh-
Did you phone her after 1:09?
Yes, yes.
What time?
Uh, at 1:13, oh, that, that, sorry, uh, 1:14.
1:14?
Yeah, uh, the first one dropped out.
And you said, listen-
And then, and then once again at, at 1:35?
Right.
And then once again at 2:17.
2:17, um-
Did you actually speak to her, or just try to phone?
Yes, I did speak to her, I rang her number, we spoke. Look, Christine and I had a really good working relationship, we would talk in normal circumstances three or four times a day. Uh, it was very usual for us to speak, including this day, in light of the circumstances.
So at 3:43, Minister Fletcher phones you again?
3:43, the minister rings me and asks what we were doing, and I said, we had organised a board meeting to discuss and consider the matters that he'd raised, which was going to take place.
But you didn't respond to his, his request, his direction, I'll call it?
His request. I, I took it as a request.
Yes.
That doesn't mean the board ignores that request, but it considers it as part of the overall evidence.
Could I ask you, so, did you think to ask him when he phoned you at 1:09, that he should actually, you know, ask for a Section 49 direction?
Uh, no, no, we, we, we hadn't got the law books out, he was just asking-
Well, I would, I don't think it's a matter of getting the law books out, I think it's just that if the minister phoned, I would assume in some, you know, there was some urgency to his tone.
He did, he did.
Senator Kitchen, we are going to go to some other questions for some other senators.
I'd really like, I mean, I don't really want to spend the time going through, um, the Chair's, uh, phone records, but what I would like to know, so, I would like you to table relevant phone calls-
Okay.
-for the committee, but I would also include if you received any phone, so all relevant telephone calls, so including any phone calls from the minister's office, so not just the minister, I want to make this as broad as possible.
So, perhaps I can address that. So, uh, we have tabled, uh, the telephone records for the Chair, uh, which are the outgoing calls from his number, uh, and, uh, so that will pick up other calls, yep.
Okay, so, sorry, all of your phone calls?
All of his outgoing calls.
Going out, I, I could not get incoming calls from Telstra.
But you might have, you would have had a record, but can I also ask, were there any relevant text messages? Did you receive any text messages?
No, there were no relevant text messages.
I might mention one thing in respect of those phone records, both for the Chair and Ms. Holgate, uh, they list lots of outgoing calls on lots of numbers, and, uh, I think, or I would request that the committee treat those records with sensitivity and personal information.
And I'm not suggesting that we do anything else.
Just in terms of publication and stuff.
Yeah, no, I agree with you, yes.
My personal public, private phone?
Yes.
It's what I contact and use for my family, other businesses.
Well, I think, I think I'm the only parliamentarian who pays her own telephone bill, so I, I'm with you, Mr. Di Bartolomeo. I do.
It depends how many phones we've got, doesn't it? I mean, yeah.
Uh, one phone is enough.
Okay, Senator Kitchen, I'm going to go to, um, Senator Cannavan.
I do have more questions, Chair, so I'll come back.
Yep.
Sorry, now that I have the call, can I just ask Secretary for another copy of the opening statement, if that's possible?
Yeah, we'll have to, thank you.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Chair, uh, and thank you, uh, for joining us today, thanks, thanks, Sarah. Um, I just wanted to go, go actually to the opening statement. I, I think you've explained here that, you know, Christine and Ms. Holgate, you referred to Christine, that Ms. Holgate resigned in the context of a situation where there was increasing media focus and commentary, and, uh, that I suppose was distracting the organisation, was it, in your view, at the time?
Uh, it wasn't so much distracting the organisation, it was having impact on Christine, as she quite clearly pointed out today in her evidence. That was her judgement as to why she felt her position ongoing was untenable.
Right, okay, so there wasn't, you don't think-
It wasn't us.
You weren't, you weren't distracted at all from her leaving?
From her-
From her, from her standing aside and then ultimately resigning, that wasn't a distraction to the organisation at all?
It was a, a distraction for us, but that, you know, we dealt with that, and we put in place the circumstances where we had teams who were concentrating on the, the rural business of Australia Post, and we had people put aside to deal with the investigation that took place.
I mean, I, I would struggle to believe that it wasn't somewhat of a distraction, uh, we, we heard some evidence this morning from some of your existing staff that referred to division. How would you describe the morale of, uh, you're at the Australia, Australia Post at the moment, uh?
I believe the morale of Australia Post, yes, uh, there was clear shock, first of all, at the evidence, the need to ask her to stand aside, the independent investigation that was taking place, and then, more importantly, the shock that she resigned. That was a significant shock to the organisation and to us as a board. Um, but importantly, and I think it's telling, that, that largest parcel delivery activity ever undertaken by Australia Post in the lead-up to that Christmas period, not only was it the largest, and as I said, under difficult operating conditions, it was very successful. And I think it showed the character of the organisation to get on with the job when they were required to get on with the job.
There still does seem to be, uh, a lot of division among employees, unions, uh, the Licensed Post Office group, an important partner for yourselves, I mean, what is the plan that you're implementing to try and repair, uh, those fractured relationships?
I said in my opening statement that Christine was a very good CEO, and there's no doubt she had a lot of support, rightly so. Uh, but we've got to move on. We've appointed a new CEO. I believe that we've appointed a CEO that will take up the reins of what Christine left it with, and, and continue forward and onwards. I think the, and the LPOs, for instance, their concerns about potential privatisation and the like, there is no such evidence, uh, and no such initiative, uh, on the board's part in our corporate plan, our corporate strategy, we're developing our next round of corporate planning, and there is absolutely no such, uh, desire, intent to do that, to, to change any of the, particularly the, the regional rural, uh, LPOs and that are out there in the system.
Given that, um, uh, as you say, Ms. Holgate has a lot of support among your employees, and, and important clients and related suppliers, um, and given that Ms. Holgate this morning has called for your resignation, would it not be better for Australia Post if you were to leave now as well?
I think Australia Post has, has been taken through a, a very difficult patch, and my view is, and until I believe differently, I will not be resigning, I certainly don't believe it would help, I think, I think it would further, uh, further hinder the organisation going forward. We're going to have a new CEO in place, taking up in the next few months, and I think the stability, uh, with the board, I think is essential at this point in time.
Uh, do you think, uh, you as Chair, uh, effectively managed the, the exit of Ms. Holgate from the organisation over the past few months?
When, what's got to be understood is that Ms. Holgate, on the 2nd of November, offered her resignation. From my perspective, a resignation is a unilateral action. Someone resigns, wants to resign, resigns or doesn't. The only issue that had to be managed post her resignation was one of, she wanted to have the resignation effective immediately. She was under contractual obligations to actually give a six months' notice. The board understood the circumstances she was in, and in fact agreed to giving, to allowing her to take her resignation effective immediately. And unfortunately, we then sent her, appropriately, we sent a letter to her saying, let's acknowledge that we're changing this contractual condition, her condition, that she asked for and we agreed to, and that likewise, she said she didn't want financial compensation, and we were just accepting that.
But, but, but just on that day, just going to that day, and this question of, of the management of this, what was clearly a difficult process, but I believe, and, and you, you correct me if any of this is wrong, but on the timeline provided, timeline provided by Ms. Holgate, she says that at 10:46 AM she sent you, you and the board a letter-
Yes.
-on the 2nd of November, uh, offering her resignation.
Yes.
Um, by 1:30 PM that afternoon, it was being reported on Sky News. I mean, how can you say that, that you've managed this delicate, sensitive process well, when you presided over a situation where, uh, some, a personal, uh, obviously difficult decision of your CEO has ended up leaked to the national media within hours of it being provided to the board?
Senator, we did not leak any information to Sky News or any other-
So you're suggesting Ms. Holgate did, or people associated with her did?
Well, I, I, I don't know what others did. What I'm saying is that Australia Post, we did not leak it.
How do you know that? How do you know that Australia Post didn't leak it?
Okay. Certainly the board and management did not leak it.
Have you conducted, did you conduct?
Well, those who, sorry, those who knew of it, which was very limited, the board and, and, and Nick, and maybe one or two others, uh, we were tied up.
So who was that actually, correspondent?
Or who was told?
Well, I, I don't know, it came, the correspondence wasn't ours, it was Christine. And as I heard in the, in the, uh, in her evidence this morning, she prepared that and was waiting around with a, a number of people in, at her end.
Did you send it to the minister's office?
When we say, I think, just to clarify, wouldn't you, did anyone from Australia Post send it to the minister's office?
Yes.
I don't believe we did.
Mr. McDonald, did anybody, did you conduct any investigations about the events of the 2nd of November, uh, around who leaked this, or have you asked any questions?
Yeah, all right, uh, thank you, Senator. So we haven't conducted any investigation into the allegation of a leak to Sky News. Uh, I note what Sky News was reporting was that there were rumours of a resignation, uh, but, uh, no, that's only something that's been raised in, um, by Ms. Holgate, uh, in her submission, uh, we can take on notice conducting an investigation, but, uh, I'm not quite sure how that would be done.
As Chairperson, when did you inform the minister that Ms. Holgate had, uh, sent in her resignation?
Um, I don't have a direct record, uh, but I did ring before the board meeting, before our board meeting, uh, at 1 o'clock.
Yep.
And what time was it, um, broken on Sky News, Senator Cannavan?
It was 1:30.
Yes.
I think, I think-
So 1pm, you informed the Minister that Ms Holgate-
They had the board meeting.
So before 1pm, you'd informed the Minister that Ms Holgate had resigned?
Can't, can't be certain whether I informed the Minister or the Minister's office as to whether I contacted him or not.
Well, maybe we, uh-
Can we just, yeah, I think, can you say, was it a verbal report? Was it, was the correspondence communicated to the, any of the Ministers, Ministers' offices?
No, we didn't send the, the correspondence, not at that stage.
What then, when did you send the correspondence?
I think, we'd have to take that on notice. I don't have a recollection of any written notice to Minister's office at the time.
Who did the notification to the Minister or the Minister's office? Was that you, Mr Chairman?
Yes.
And was that a phone call?
Yes, it was a phone call.
And so you can't remember whether you spoke to the Minister or spoke to a staff member?
Correct. I don't recall.
Oh, come on.
Well, I, I remember passing it on. I don't, I don't believe it was the Minister, because those calls tend to stand out more in my mind.
You'd think so, wouldn't you? Yeah.
But, so, so I'm assuming it was someone in the Minister's office.
Okay. But it was a phone call from you to at least informing the Minister, whether to his office, that Ms Holgate had, had resigned?
That's the best of my recollection.
Thank you. Senator Cannavon, I'm going to go to Senator Hanson.
Just, I've still got some on this line of questioning, if that's okay.
Very quickly.
So on this day, on the 2nd of November, I believe on Ms Holgate's timeline, she mentions, and again, correct me if you think, if you think differently here, but that at 3:15pm, a journalist from The Australian shared a copy of the media's statement that Australia Post had made. It's saying that she had resigned. I've got here that, in her evidence, you, you yourself personally emailed Ms Holgate at 4:13pm on the 2nd of November with a copy of the press release. So did Australia Post provide the press release to the media before they provided it to Ms Holgate announcing her resignation?
I'm, I'm, I'm not aware. I have to take that on notice.
Take that on notice?
Can I say, when, when she sent in her letter of resignation, she also sent with it a copy of a press statement she was releasing at 2 o'clock. And in her letter of resignation says that whatever occurs between now and then, in any event, she was releasing that press release at 2 o'clock.
Right, okay.
Her words, "In any event, we'll release it at 2 o'clock."
Well, if you could just take on notice the timing. Now, I had some other questions about the evidence you provided to estimates, but that might take a while, so it sounds like I need to give up the call.
But there's a more general question, if, if, Chair, if you would-
Yes.
I mentioned the question of procedural fairness and natural justice. I think that should also be accorded to you, Mr Chairman. There's been a series of allegations made about your evidence. And as you know, Senate Standing Orders are quite clear about evidence, misleading evidence. So I think you should be given the opportunity to respond to the evidence that's been put to us and the contradictions. And we have already indicated that the committee is going to have another hearing. I'd suggest to you, if you make the suffice to you-
Thank you.
That there'd be a careful examination of what's been said and the differences between your evidence and that that's been tended. And if you could make a supplementary submission responding to those allegations.
First and foremost, I've never lied to the Senate estimates.
It's, it's more, but I'm, it's not just the Senate estimates, I'll just say the evidence that's been presented.
More generally, evidence generally.
Because there are an opportunity to correct the record, that's under the statute.
And, and, and Ms Holgate did actually pick up two comments that I made on the Senate estimates on the 9th of, of November, where she claims that I lied. Clearly, the evidence I gave was not 100% accurate, and we went back and corrected that for the record. And it related to, it related to a letter that was sent by her to the Minister on the 31st of March. And had I, had I seen it, I certainly was aware of all the content, that's what I answered at the question. I didn't think I'd seen it, but in actual fact, I had seen it, and we've corrected that. The second one was to do with the BCG report, where I said I hadn't seen the final, the final draft. The reality is, I, I had seen the draft. I, sorry, I think I said something along the lines, I'd seen various, we'd had various meetings with, with BCG, and I'd seen various elements. I wasn't sure that I'd seen the, the final draft. Natural fact, I have seen the final draft, and again, we corrected it. They were two primary issues where she said I lied too.
So you feel you don't need to respond or anything further?
Well, I'm not quite sure what she's referring to.
Okay. Senator Hanson?
Yeah, thank you very much. You speak very highly of Christine Holgate and the work that she's done as CEO of the organisation. She's said she's been absolutely fantastic, actually to the point where it's been a seven and a half billion of revenue. You've got a group, growing group revenue of 7%, adding 500 million from the previous year, and over 700 million excluding letters. They've actually, corporate costs are down over 60 million. It just goes on and on. Then you've had the, the Post Office's profitability grew, securing a new agreement, the first in 27 years. She's been the best CEO that you've had for a long, long time, and see the, the growth in Australia Post. And yet this person, that you say, turns up and gives them a letter of resignation, and you did absolutely nothing about it. You didn't pick up the phone, you didn't say, Christine, we can't accept this. How are you mentally, you should not be handing this resignation in now. What did the board do to actually say, we don't want to lose you? You said she was the best CEO you've had. You gave her a 95% score rating, and yet you did absolutely nothing of wanting to try and keep her in that position. Why?
Well, first of all, she's the only CEO that I've known at Australia Post. But she was a good CEO, so I'm not detracting from that. And I said she was a good CEO. But we went through a process in that 10 days between the 22nd and the 10th, where she came to a conclusion it was untenable for her to continue, and the board reluctantly came to the same conclusion. Albeit, it was a loss. I don't disagree with what you're saying, that it was a loss, but there comes a time when you have to move on, and that time had come for both of us.
When there were statements released to the media that she spent 800, it was true reported figures, 700,000 or 800,000 dollars to do with plants. And then she was accused of actually spending, you know, for, for limousines or nails or cosmetics or whatever, like that. Where were you to defend her? Because you know that that 700,000, 800,000 dollars had nothing to do with her. It was a previous CEO, that actually that was an agreement between that. So what did you do?
Senator, I didn't know whether the 700,000 was approved by her.
But you've got a board there who were directors on the previous. So you, as the Chair, should have actually looked up to see if this was right to defend the woman of being accused of things that never happened.
That's exactly what we did. We did try and look up. It, it wasn't a question of looking it up in five minutes. So there was a lot of work done on all of the expenditures.
At what time did you actually defend her? Give me one example of where you went to the media, said, this is not right. She didn't do this. What point of time have you ever defended her and set the record straight?
There was no way I could go to the media and say, it's not right, she never did this, because I don't know what she did. That was what the investigation was going to do. It's what the work we were going to do. And my personal view is, I, I don't believe she, she did anything out of the ordinary.
It was proven by the Matics report.
The investigation had to take place.
All right. You tell me in your words, what do you think the investigation was supposed to be about?
To identify not only the circumstances surrounding the four watches, but general expenditure of that kind more generally. And whether there were any, and who knew of-
Of the board and the executives, and an investigation into the whole organisation, wasn't it? It was an investigation basically into the, into Australia Post, to do with the expenses, the cost, the running of it, everything like that, wasn't it?
Yes, it was.
Right. How many hours were you investigated by Matics?
Well-
For how many hours were you interviewed?
I was interviewed for about an hour, hour and a half.
Right. What about the rest of the board members? Were they all interviewed?
Most, I don't think all, though.
What about the executives? How many?
A number of them. I don't know how many.
Christine Holgate for nearly five hours, as if the whole matter revolved around just about the watches of actually trolling through emails and expenses accounts for the last three years. This whole matter seemed like it was just to actually get Christine Holgate. Because it's come out in the report that she did absolutely nothing wrong.
The report doesn't quite say that. The report says there's no-
There was no dishonesty, there was no-
No dishonesty, all of that. And I agree with that. But the report did say that she did not, the expenditure with specific regards to the watches was not consistent with the purpose of resource expenditure at, at, at Australia Post.
She had-
And it was, it was a technical breach on, on that score.
Right. You said that if you were in charge of the board, you would not have approved it. It had nothing to do with the board, because she had an expense account of up to 150,000 dollars to give us rewards if she wanted to. She didn't have to pass this by the board?
What I said was-
That's why it was not passed by the previous board, and that's why the boards, they had no record of it, no meaning of it, because it didn't have to go past the board, and that's why there was nothing on it. So she didn't just do anything underhanded. It was not required of her to pass that by the board.
There's no doubt. She has a delegated authority that's far higher than 20,000.
Correct.
But that doesn't mean that she can do anything she wishes with her delegation. The delegation still has to be used with absolute discretion and consistent with using taxpayer funds. That's the whole purpose of this exercise. What, did she spend 20,000 on something? And I answered, if I was there and I was aware of it, and obviously I wasn't there and I wasn't aware of it, would I have, would I have said something about it? I said, I would have. My experience in my time working for government business enterprises was that you don't do things of that elaborate nature, because it's not appropriate.
Has any large bonuses or, or cash bonuses been given to any executive or board members?
Board members?
Since you've been there, the last couple of years?
Board members don't receive any bonuses.
Right, executives.
Executives don't receive bonuses. They, they receive a remuneration package that includes a short term incentive. It's part of their formal contractual obligation. They have a fixed amount and another amount that's available depending on performance. The 95% you spoke of was that the KPIs that measure that-
Score.
Last year was 95%, or the year before, forget which one. But that was the issue. And, and I, I take exception to the word bonus being used, because it, it tends to imply there's this broad sort of laser fare, we'll give out some money for the heck of it. The reality is, we recruit people from largely the private sector in a marketplace with people who have the experience to deal with what we have to do. And the contract we enter into is quite clearly laid out, says, this is your fixed annual remuneration, whatever the number is. And a proportion of that, and it varies depending what, what level you sit in the organisation, is a proportion of that is the STI, measured against a number of KPIs. Not a bonus.
I'm going to go back to, I'm going to go to the letter of resignation that you received from her. You state that you had a board meeting at 1 o'clock. You, that letter and the statement provided by Christine Holgate, you received at 10:46am that morning. It was released to the media 1:30. You can't answer how that got out. She did not release it, because under the letter it also said that she was waiting for your favourable response to it. You never responded to her at all that day with regards to that letter, did you?
We did respond to her.
Where?
Later that afternoon. Later that afternoon. And in that letter, that same letter you're referring to, she says that she's making a public statement. In any event, she was going to make that public statement, whether we answered her or responded to her in time or not. 2 o'clock was her deadline.
That was an offer of resignation.
Sorry?
As she indicated, it was an offer of resignation. She didn't say, I'm resigning. She said, I'm offering to resign.
Well, my, my view is, the resignation is one way, but we accepted her offer.
Without any counteraction of actually going back to her and saying, look, we, we're not accepting this because your, your mental condition and under the, you know, circumstances, it was your duty of care not to accept that letter of resignation. Upon that, you've actually followed up with the letter to further asking her not to seek employment, further employment with anyone else. She was now to, to go to speak about the media or Australia Post for a period of time. You actually put stipulations on her. You wanted to draw up a further agreement. Is that correct?
No.
Oh.
We did not put any further limitations on her. In fact, we released her. She, she had, under her contract, she's got two obligations. One, if you want to resign, give six months' notice. And then once you resign, once your resignation becomes effective, you are, you are constrained from competing, poaching customers or staff for a further six months. We, in fact, agreed to her request to an immediate resignation and released her from that six months' notice. The, the, the following six months, she is on a, under a contract obliged to not enter into a, a, a job in competition with, with Australia Post.
The issue is, you didn't want her to take any legal action against Australia Post, didn't you?
No, the legal issue was that, the issue was simply around that she had made a statement that she didn't want any financial, any financial compensation, and we wanted to confirm that that was what she was saying.
Senator Hanson, I'm going to go to Senator Henderson in a moment, so if you've got a final question?
Why, you, you said you had put in place a CEO, but you actually announced that, and you put that in place with it, and you knew that this, this Senate inquiry was actually going to come up, and yet you still announced it yesterday. I know we've, we've covered this, but if you think she's such a good CEO, why didn't you actually then ask her to come back?
She resigned on the 2nd of November. We accepted that she would, she resigned and we, and, and as you say, she offered, we accepted. And the rationale for that was, notwithstanding that she was a CEO, when you go through the circumstances that she went through and she came to the conclusion it was untenable for her to continue, we reluctantly came to similar conclusions, that it was untenable.
Because she didn't have the support from you or the board, and you didn't give her that support that she needed. And the whole fact is that I, I have a real interest in the BCG report, because under that report, its intentions of what it came down is to actually cut the financial services from the local post, from post offices. You're actually going to look at privatisation of the parcel post and also, you know, financial services that will actually make a big difference. She opposed that. She did not agree with it. So how, why would you have a CEO in place who was going to oppose all this? And that was known in that report, that she did oppose what was in that report. It's only just been tabled today.
Let me say this. I, first of all, the BCG report hasn't been released.
It's been tabled today. We know it's in it.
Okay. Well, what I'm saying, it hasn't been released by government. No instruction has come to us about any of those actions. More importantly, we commenced our strategic planning process for this next year. And it was, it was introduced by our shareholder minister, Minister Fletcher. And in, in his opening remarks, before we got on to the details of how we were going to finalise our strategy for the coming year, he made three comments to us. One, ensure that our plans fully respect and adhere to the, the, what I call the the social, the, the community service obligations that we have at Australia Post in full. Two, ensure that we manage to run all this with, on a financial sustainability basis. I.e. make enough profits that we can continue operating without handouts from the government. And thirdly, he said, and if you can make a little more profit, that would be nice. But importantly, there was no direction, no indication of a, a change of strategy in regards to our community service obligations.
Because all of those issues are quite a matter of deep contention. Can I indicate, Madam Chair, I've got a document here which goes to Service Delivery in Western Australia under the, for the 17th of the 3rd, 21. This is the West Australian Deliveries Tracking Daily Update. And a couple of other dates in the, can I table that document? The 15th of the 3rd, 21, in, in Western Australia, and it's due to staff shortages. Can I table that? And I'll, I'll raise this matter with you next time we see you. And we go specifically to the government, reactions with the government in terms of the Boston Consulting Group report and various destructions.
Okay. Thank you, Senator Carr. And I'm, I'm going to go to Senator Henderson now, and-
Could I give a quick response for clarity of a question earlier about after receiving her resignation? Apparently I did email both chiefs of staff to our shareholder min-
Apparently I did email both chiefs of staff to our shareholder ministers, uh, at 11:45 that day.
You emailed them just simply notification?
Notification.
We have a copy of that email. I'd like you to table that.
At 11:45.
11:45, yes.
Thank you.
The Chief of Staff.
That was, no, that was to the two ministers, right.
Chiefs of Staff.
Chiefs of Staff.
Chiefs of Staff.
Senator Henderson.
Thank you very much, Chair. Mr. Barto Lameo.
Okay. So it's, sorry, let me correct it. It's to the department, Andrew Jaggers, and, and to the Chief of Staff, Minister Fletcher.
At 11:45.
11:45.
Thank you. Senator Henderson.
Thank you very much, Chair. And Mr. Barto Lameo, have either of the shareholder ministers for Australia Post ever indicated to you an intention to privatis any part of Australia Post?
None whatsoever. None whatsoever. When the Minister Fletcher first contacted me about this potential role, uh, his, his concern was, I want someone to come in and ensure that we ma- maintain financial sustainability. That was, that was all, that was the driver. How do we maintain financial sustainability? Because notwithstanding the good performance, our profitability over the last three or four years was in decline. Our revenue might have been going up, but our profitability was in decline. Now, during, during, during Christine's time as well. I, I'm not blaming her, I'm just saying, they're the circumstances of the marketplace.
So, Mr. Barto Lameo, uh, there's been some suggestions made today in this hearing as to Australia Post's intention or some sort of plan to privatis, but you categorically reject that?
Categorically, never discussed in any fashion with either minister.
Sorry, Senator Carr.
That's what the report says.
Sorry, Senator Carr.
It wasn't our report.
Hang on, hang on a second. Senator Henderson has to...
Thank you very much, Chair. So just to finish your answer, so you categorically reject any suggestion to that effect?
That's right. A, I never, I've never discussed, coming either way, privatisation, any notion of that. Uh, the report, the BCG report was not our report, uh, and we certainly did not recommend anything to BCG along the lines that you're talking about.
Thanks very much, thanks, sorry, sorry. Chair, I have the call at the moment. Chair, through the chair.
Hang on.
I do have the call, thank you.
Yes, you do have the call, Senator Henderson.
Thank you very much, Chair. Uh, Mr. Barto Lameo, have, um, the shareholder ministers set out their expectations for Australia Post? Uh, and if so, what are they?
Uh, well, I, I guess it's along the lines that I spoke of earlier, where the minister sort of gave us the, 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 the primary objectives that he would like to see. One, ensure that we maintain our community service obligations as they currently stand and deliver as required. Two, ensure that we are financially sustainable, and by that I mean that we're in, that we're in profit, not necessarily big profits, but profit, and, uh, and, which is really vital to us, to allow us to make the capital expenditure required to continue to grow the business as the parcel business grows. And then the third one was kind of an aside almost, uh, and if you can make that profit a little bigger, that, that would be nice.
We have received, uh, different versions of events in relation to the issue as to, um, whether Ms. Holgate agreed to stand aside. Um, she says in her submission that she did not speak with you. Um, in your statement, which was publicly released on the 7th of April, uh, you, obviously, and we've canvassed this before, um, you've spoken of phone records showing conversations which have occurred, and there's obviously some further questions about incoming and outgoing telephone records, but can you provide the committee with detail about those conversations? And just specify what was said at what time, uh, and with whom you spoke?
Sorry, could you clarify which, which ones now? I beg your pardon.
I'm, I'm speaking about the conversations which occurred on the 22nd of October 2020 in relation to the issue of Ms. Holgate standing aside.
Yes. Uh, I received a, a call initially from the minister saying he was quite taken aback by the evidence that had been given at Senate Inquiry, and that he'd come to the conclusion that he would want the Department of, uh, the Department of Finance, I think it is, or both departments, actually.
I'm sorry, just to clarify, I'm not asking about your conversations with the minister, it's the, your conversations with Ms. Holgate.
Oh, beg your pardon.
So they, uh...
Okay.
These are the phone records showing conversations occurred at 4:27 PM and 5:50 PM on the 22nd of October 2020.
While we had earlier discussions that day with Ms. Holgate, it was relating to her the, the discussion I'd had with the ministers. But at that point, um, I was effectively talking to Ms. Holgate about the board's desire that she stand aside during the course of this four-week investigation.
And so, so just to, sorry, Chair, just to, just to, so you've expressed the board's desire that she stand aside, and what was her response to you?
Well, the initial response was that she did want, did not want to stand aside.
And that was in the first phone call?
In the first phone call.
At the one at 4:27 PM?
4:27 PM.
Okay, and then...
And, and, and the starting point of the second one was much the same.
The starting point, so that's the phone call at 5:50 PM?
5:50. And then also discussion took place about taking leave. And at the end of that, I said, look, these aren't going to work, and, and my strong, strong, uh, advice to her was that she stand aside, it would be in her best interest.
And what was her response when you said that?
And, and she agreed to that.
So what were her, the form of her words that she used?
Uh, I, I, I don't recall the exact words, I'm, I'm not...
So there was a lot of to-ing and fro-ing?
There was a lot of to-ing and fro-ing, but ultimately she agreed, reluctantly agreed that she would stand aside.
So at the end of that conversation, which occurred at 5:50 PM?
How long did that conversation...
Sorry, just so, sorry, Chair, just so I can finish my question. So at the, the end of that phone call, after a to-ing and fro-ing as to whether she would agree, and then there was a discussion about annual leave, you're saying at the end of that conversation, she reluctantly agreed to stand aside?
Correct. And, and I then relayed that to the ultimate, uh, segment of the board meeting, advising them of such.
So there was no doubt in your mind, knowing of course that there was initial disagreement and reluctance, but there was no doubt in your mind that she had in fact agreed to stand aside, albeit reluctantly?
Correct. And my, that evening, after that discussion, after we finished our board meeting, we put out two statements, one, public statement about those events, including that she agreed to stand aside, and another one to our staff, relaying the same...
Did, did you place her under any duress to reach that agreement?
No, no. I mean, I, I, I argued strongly that I think that was in her best interest, as well as ours, as I've said, but, uh...
But she was in quite a state, wasn't she?
Yes, she was. She was.
So she was in a state of distress?
She was upset about what had just happened, yes, yes. And, and, uh, and then I rang her again after the board meeting, really for that reason.
So what time did you ring her after the board meeting?
Uh, bear with me.
And what was the nature of that conversation?
At 6:38.
Mm-hmm. And what, what was said during that conversation?
It was, you know, we, we, we'd sort of done, I, I said that we, A, we'd made a, a press release, or were about to make a press release, uh, that I would, uh, I think she asked for it to go in writing, and I said we would be doing that, and...
Did you run that past her beforehand, before it went out?
Sorry, yes.
So she saw the text of the proposed press release?
And, and this is the issue that I have a concern with.
Did you, what did you, sorry, did you read it to her, or did you email it to her? How did she see the text?
I think we emailed it to her.
You emailed it to her?
Uh, well, I didn't, but Michelle Skian did, uh, uh, emailed it to Ms. Holgate.
And what time is that email?
And her media adviser.
And what time is that email?
7:20.
So you discussed at 6:38?
Yes.
That you were going to put out a media release?
Correct.
And you said that you, you discussed the nature of what you were going to say?
Yes.
And then that was provided to her by email at 7:20?
To her and her media adviser.
So when you just...
And a copy of the, uh, public sta-, sorry, and a copy of the public statement.
Sorry, what do you mean, and a copy of the public statement?
I emailed a copy of the public statement to her.
At, at 7:20?
7:20, yes.
And so when you spoke to her again at 6:38, uh, was it, did it, any time during that conversation, she object to the notion that you were putting out a statement that she was to stand aside?
No. And furthermore, uh, once we emailed and made reference to the statement, there was no comeback. The standing aside issue, no, no, but it's important.
No, no, I understand it's important, but I just want to make it clear, in the conversation at 6:38, prior to the email going out, there was no, when you were discussing your proposal to put out the public statement, there was no suggestion from Ms. Holgate that she was not intending or had not agreed to stand aside at that 6:38 phone call?
Correct. And neither her or, or a media adviser made any comment about that statement.
Well, well, hang on a minute, sorry, when you say made any comment, did you, did you speak to a media adviser? No.
Well, they, they, neither of them raised a concern.
So you're talking about, once you emailed her and her media adviser at 7:20, did you email them together or separately?
I don't know, I didn't do any email.
So once that 7:20 email was sent, there was no response?
No response. Furthermore...
It was, it was ne-, sorry, when you say there was no response, was there response at any time after that email was sent?
Well, I was going to say, I then rang her the next morning at 7:49 AM to talk to her.
Sorry, just, just, could you just address my question though in relation to the response to the email? Was there at any time after you sent that email at 7:20, any response by Ms. Holgate? Could you, could you take that on notice?
We'll take it on notice, I'm not aware of it, but I was going to say, relevant to the same point, is that I had a lengthy conversation with her the next morning, and that was not raised at all by, by her then, saying, hold on, what you're claiming I still decided I didn't...
Mr. Barto Lameo, you then phoned to Ms. Holgate again at 7:49 the next morning?
7:49 the next morning.
And how long did you speak for?
Well, we spoke for 11 minutes 51, and we must have been cut off because at 8:01, because that would have been 8:01, and then 8:01, she rang me back. So we continued after that.
Okay, so what was the nature of that telephone discussion at 7:49?
It, it was checking in on how she was and what we could do to assist. It, it...
And what was her response to you?
Uh, that she wasn't very well at all. And we made sure that Sue was going to be, well, continued to be her support person through all of this.
So this was talking about the welfare and support arrangements?
Welfare and support arrangement.
Was there any other issue raised during that call, or the, or the 8:01 call?
Uh, I don't recall, but certainly there was no issue raised about her taking a different view about her agreement to stand aside.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Barto Lameo. Uh, look, just a couple of other quick questions. Um, on the 30th of October 2020 in a doorstop, and Chair, I'm sorry, it's published on Mr. Albanese's website, but I don't have a copy, uh, but it is published on his website, um, if anyone needs to have this tabled. Uh, Mr. Albanese said, Christine Holgate has done the wrong thing, I support her paying a price for that. Do you agree with that statement?
I guess the question is, what price? I mean, in my view...
I mean, that was a pretty robust position that Mr. Albanese was taking, taking, wasn't it?
In my view, while I, I, I disagreed with giving Cartier Watches full rewards to staff, no matter how good the job is, and in my view, if I was there, I wouldn't, I would have said no.
No, no, I understand that.
Had it come up, I would have, I, I, I...
No, sorry, Mr. Barto Lameo, I just want to ask you, do you agree with that very strong statement, or very robust statement made by Mr. Albanese in his doorstop on the 30th of October?
No.
Okay, thank you. Um, in a tweet by Senator Kitching, which was, again, I apologise, Chair, I don't have a paper copy of it, but it was on the 9th of November 2020, Senator Kitching said, Labour will hold Scott Morrison's mega salaried Australia Post CEO to account. Do you agree with the position that Senator Kitching took at that time?
Well, I'm not sure what, I'm not sure what's...
Well, well, for, for, so, so for instance, do you, do you support the tenor of what Senator Kitching said? No, I'm, well, I'm asking Mr. Barto Lameo.
Okay.
That's, on the basis of what I've heard, that's not an issue in itself, no.
Okay.
Mr. Barto...
And the last, just the last one, on the 22nd of October, the CPSU, um, issued a media release, um, and it said, it is clear that the board and the CEO are more concerned with lining their pockets than public services and their workers. The union representing Australia Post workers, the CPSU, is calling for the resignation of Australia Post CEO and investigation into the board. Uh, do you agree with that position taken by the union representing Australia Post workers?
No, I don't.
Thank you very much, no further questions, Chair.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Henderson. Um, Mr. Chairman, there's been a number of, uh, senators around this table who have indicated that they have more questions. Um, however, you've been here for quite some time, and so we're going to relieve you, uh, today, uh, but I'm just warning you that we, um, we may be getting you back. Um, okay?
You regret taking this job on, I was just speaking.
So thank you for your evidence today. I, I appreciate it, uh, we all appreciate it, thank you very much. Um, we're going to have a five-minute break, but before we do that, I just want to let you know that the LPO group, uh, we're not going to get to you today, um, uh, so we will bring you back, uh, but we can relieve you so that you can, um, go home. Thank you for hanging around, and thank you for, uh, your submission, submission number 14, if anybody is interested in what they have to say. Uh, next, after a five-minute break, we are going to have, uh, the, um, executives of, uh, Australia Post.
Acting Group Chief Executive Officer and Managing Director, Australia Post.
Thank you.
Nick McDonald, General Counsel and Corporate Secretary, Australia Post.
Thank you, Senator Nicole Sheffield, Executive General, Manager, Community and Consumer.
Thank you. Thank you, and thank you all for being here today, and appreciate you being flexible with the scheduling of, of your evidence. Now, I understand, Mr. Boyes, you don't have a short opening statement, so we can just go straight to questions, which is very good. Now, I'm, I'm going to give Senator Hanson the call first, and we'll kick it off that way.
Mr. Boyes, you are actually the Chief Executive Officer and the Managing Director. Did you take over the position after Christine Holgate left the position?
As acting.
Acting?
Acting, Chief Executive and Managing Director.
With Christine Holgate actually being, had to stand down from her position on October the 22nd, what impact did it have on Australia Post?
Senator, thank you very much for that question. As I understand it, when Miss Holgate and the Chair agreement was reached to stand aside, obviously it was quite a difficult time for Australia Post, a difficult time for, for everybody, but we were really focused, and I was charged to step into the, into the breach and focus on delivering for Christmas. We had, the pandemic was upon us, parcel volumes were significant, we were expecting a very large peak, which peak is across the cyber period at the end of November and into December as you lead into Christmas, we're expecting a significant volume of parcels, so our focus and the rally to the troops was, let's all just stay focused and, and deliver for the community and for the customers, and I think we did that, we had a record peak over November, December, if I recall, it was about 86 million parcels, which is an absolute record.
What date did you take up that position, that acting role?
On the evening of the 22nd of October, I guess.
What did you, how long were you supposed to be in that position for? What timeframe was given to you?
Until the duration of finding a permanent Chief Executive Officer, well, in the first instance, up until the period of the investigation, so four weeks, that was that period of time from the 22nd, and then on the 2nd of November, after Miss Holgate attended her resignation, I was asked to step in until a replacement was found.
Right. The, during your period of time, that, has there been loss of clients or the volume coming through? And I have been informed that David Jones have actually cut back their parcel delivery through you and gone through another service provider, is that correct?
Senator, I have to take that specific customer question on notice.
Can anyone else there on the board answer that question?
I doubt very much here, we don't have Mr. Starr, who is...
Sheffield, do you have anything to add to that?
Well, actually, yes, Senator, I can say that David Jones has not produced service with us, in fact, volumes have increased for a number of clients, and because of the growth in e-commerce over that peak period, many clients decided to, what we call, stream a number of parcels to different providers because the volumes were so big, so it's not that less volumes come to us, in fact, our volumes have grown, but their volumes have also grown. As for David Jones, my understanding, after we had a conversation actually, was I checked with Gary Starr, the AGM of Business and Government, and they have not streamed away from us.
Right. Is any one of you on the board the, the day that, on the 22nd of October, when Christine Holgate was to stand down? Were you on that board, on that meeting?
Senator, thank you for the question, I was not a board member of Australia Post.
So there's no one here can verify whether an exec, well, Mr. McDonald, you, you, well, you weren't there for that day either, were you?
No, I was not present at that meeting.
You just had write-up minutes that the, that the Chair told you, this is what happened, you were writing it up to that effect.
It was a private session of the board, so all board members that were non-executive were in attendance, and yes, as you said, I was asked to prepare the minutes by the Chair and did so, and they were later confirmed by the board.
Right. During the, Maddox did have an investigation into Australia Post, well, it was supposed to be about the workings of Australia Post, see how monies were spent and in light of the watches. Which of you was interviewed by Maddox for that investigation?
Senator, I was interviewed by Maddox.
And for what period of time?
Senator, I have to go back, it was, it was quite some time, I'll have to go back to my records and check.
Was it half an hour, an hour, two hours, five hours?
It was a good length of time, so I would say an hour, so at least, so, but I'd have to check.
And what did they cover? What did they ask you?
Senator, I might just point out at this point that I joined Australia Post 27th of May 2019, which was sometime after the purchase of the watches, so my...
But was it...
Period of time was...
But that's not my understanding, my understanding is the Prime Minister wanted an investigation into the expenses of, of Australia Post, so it wasn't just about the watches, surely?
No, exactly, so that's why I was interviewed.
So you should have been asked questions, so if you were interviewed for that period of time, what were you asked? General, give me some idea.
Yeah, just around the equitable processes for, for expenses, for example, how does the CEO expenses get signed off, for example, the equitable process around that, delegations, just policies, gifts, benefits, hospitality, reward recognition, those sort of things, so, yeah, a range of questions.
Ms. Davies, you were actually interviewed?
I was interviewed, Senator.
For how long?
Probably for about an hour as well.
An hour? Were you asked to produce your emails, documentation, phones?
So I was asked to, I was asked numerous questions around expenditure, I was asked about a specific gift that Christine Holgate gave to me, which was a bottle of perfume for a thank you for working three weekends, questioned about a Christmas singer that we had, so just, just numerous things, you know, questioned on expenditure, produced a, Maddox produced a contract of employment for one of the people who had received a watch, and I wasn't in a position to comment on that contract, it was about eight years old, so I wasn't, I wasn't in a position to comment on it, so, so yeah, just general questions around expenditure.
Were any one of you appalled by the fact that Cartier watches were bought as a, as a thank you to those executives who worked hard to bring in that contract from the Bank of Post? Was there any, from anyone that you're aware of, work at Australia Post, were appalled by it? Or was everyone quite happy with it? Did you, did anyone that you know think it was what the CEO did at the time buying the Cartier watches out of place and unwarranted, and it shouldn't ever have been done? Was there any criticism?
I can just say that at the time, it was, I certainly wasn't aware of it till many months later, so even though I was there at the time, I wasn't in the Melbourne office or attending that afternoon tea, so I wasn't aware of it till later.
Okay.
Senator, I wasn't aware until the Senate estimates hearing of the purchase of, of the watches, so I can't really comment.
All right, that's all I have, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Davies, were you aware of the watches being gifted?
I was aware, probably a few days after the watches had been gifted.
And as Head of Culture and, what's your official role?
Executive General Manager of People and Culture.
People and Culture?
Yeah.
Did it seem out of kilter to what the, the culture of the place normally was?
I would say that the, that the culture of Australia Post is extremely conservative around gifts and reward and recognition, and we've got very clear policies around reward and recognition, and just from saying a thank you to vouchers and morning teas, I think the significance of, of the, the Bank of Post deal, I think that's why no one may be questioned, you know, the, the magnitude of, of the watches at the time.
So it didn't seem unusual?
I'd certainly not seen anything before that or after that, to, to that level, but, you know, I think as, as everyone's positioned, you know, it, it was a significant landmark for Australia Post, and a significant, major, major big cash flow for us, and for the post offices, and a reward for the execs, or they, they weren't all execs, they were, they were managers who, who got the, the watches.
Thank you. Senator Henderson?
Thank you very much, Chair. I want to actually address a, a different matter, Mr. Boyce. I want to ask you about your tender processes involving newly established licensed post officers. Why do some go to tender and some don't, where there's no transparency and appropriate governance?
Thank you, Senator, for that question, I might just pass over to...
No, I'd like to ask you, Mr. Boyce, actually.
Sheffield, who heads up Community and Consumer, who...
No, I'd actually like to ask you this question.
Yeah?
Yep, sorry, yeah, I'd like to ask you, you're, you're the acting CEO, and you're the person with whom I have dealt directly in relation to a botched tender process, so I'm not, that's why I'm wanting to ask you.
Senator, thank you very much for that question, as previously stated, I'd stepped into the role of Acting CEO on the 2nd of November.
No, this is all on your watch, I'm talking about...
Yeah, no, thank you, I appreciate it.
This is all on your watch, so I'm talking about the Armstrong Creek LPO, where there was no tender, and then it was characterized by, by one of your staff as a transfer, so what's the basis on which some LPOs are, there's a tender for some, and there's not a tender for others? Giving no other person an opportunity to tender for a business that you establish in a particular community?
Senator, I understand your, your question, and, and your desire to probe in this area, that's why I think I would like to make sure the answer that's given is complete and accurate, and Ms. Sheffield, who heads up Consumer, Consumer and Community...
Well, could you, could you do the best?
Because there are quite different circumstances when you go into a new area.
No, but could you, could you do the best to answer the question first? Because I'd like to address these questions to you first. So what's the basis, what's the basis of LPOs being established where some are subject to a tender and some are not? That's a pretty important question for you as the acting CEO.
It's a very important question, Senator, and that's why I'd like to give you a full, frank, complete answer, and to, to do that, I'd like to go back and understand that process and, and bring you that, so we can either take that question on notice, or I can ask...
Do you want to take it on notice? So when I, when I addressed the issue that the Armstrong Creek Town Centre, there's an established, a newly, a newly established licensed post office, and I asked Mr. Janchik, who's your government relations person, and he said it was by way of a transfer process, which in fact, there wasn't a transfer, it was a newly established LPO, and I asked for the policy, Australia Post obligations and practices, when establishing newly licensed post offices, so what are they? And why do you have different rules for different people?
Senator, as, as I just outlined, I understand your desire to probe in this area, and I'd love to give you a very full, frank and complete answer on that, so we'll either take that on notice, or I've got Ms. Sheffield here.
But you must be able to tell me about the basic requirements when setting up a new LPO, that, why some are put out to tender and why some aren't?
There are some differences, absolutely, between moving into new areas, what, what's the impact on surrounding LPOs, if there are, in those particular areas, and that's why we have different processes, and that's why I'd like to give you a complete and accurate answer on that, so I can either take that on notice...
Well, can I put it to you that you are failing in your transparency, in that you are establishing some LPOs with... are establishing some LPOs with no tender, and some you are. And in the case of Mr Waring in Ocean Grove, we had a discussion on the 30th of November by telephone, in which you denied any suggestion that Australia Post had told Mr Waring that there would be a post office established at Kingston Village. You said that Australia Post ran its tender process adhering to the highest levels of integrity and due process. You did not accept my accusations, and when I said to you that some of your Australia Post executives, being Mr Mc, Mr Cox and Mr McNamara, had informed myself and Mr Waring that Australia Post have determined to locate a community LPO at the Kingston Village Shopping Centre, you said that that wasn't the case. And I said, well, I think your executives are not telling you the truth, and you rejected my position. Then I went back and established that this had actually been put in writing, and I asked for an explanation as to how you had misled Mr Waring, suggesting that the LPO would be placed at Kingston Village, and you have failed to provide any explanation, and then went and issued a licence in another shopping centre.
Can I, sorry, Senator Henderson, I, I'm not discounting the importance of your question.
It's a very important issue in Karangamark, Chair.
I'm, I'm sure it is, but it does, I'd say, fall outside the terms of reference, so I'm just wondering, you know, are there things that you would like Mr Boyce to take on notice while you've got the opportunity?
Yeah, could I, could you perhaps just indicate to me why you misled me in relation to those matters?
Senator, as we spoke at the time, the information that I had from the people that were on the call with you, I relayed to you, in that there was an expression of interest for the whole Ocean Grove area. One of those locations, a possible location, was Kingston Village, and-
No, that's, Mr, Mr Boyce, I'm sorry, Chair, if you can just give me a couple minutes and I'll finish up. Mr Boyce, that's absolutely untrue. Mr Cox, on the 28th of July, emailed me and he said, we look forward, thank you for your time today, we look forward to sending out the EOI for Kingston Village Shopping Centre Community Licensed Post Office within the next fortnight. In breach of that commitment, you then issued a very different tender. But you've denied ever making that commitment. So I put it to you, Mr Boyce, and I do look forward to your further explanation as to the inconsistent procedures involving the establishment of LPOs, the lack of transparency, and the fact that you have not told the truth in relation to your processes to establish a licensed post office in Kingston Village.
Senator, respectfully, I have told you the truth, and we will take away the question on notice regarding-
Mr Boyce, you haven't told me the truth. You haven't told me the truth at all. You, you absolutely rejected any suggestion that any of your executives had said that the, the expression of interest was, was for the Kingston Village Shopping Centre, and here's the email, so-
I told you that I had been advised by the two executives you have named, that that commitment wasn't given, and yes, there was a hastily drafted-
And that was wrong, wasn't it? That was, Mr Boyce, that was wrong?
No, they, they still stand by that today. There was a hastily drafted email from Mr Cox to you, just following up on that, and then there was an expression of interest-
Mr Boyce, do you have a culture in your senior executive levels of not telling the truth? Because that is absolutely false, and I take great exception to what you've just said to me. There was a discussion with Mr Waring about the fact that the EIO, the expression of interest would only be for the Kingston Village Shopping Centre. We spoke about that at length. There was then an email, and then I responded saying how fabulous it was that you were going to establish a shopping centre, oh, sorry, a licensed post office at this shopping centre. So what you've just put to me is completely untrue.
I-
Okay, Senator.
And I, I look forward, I look forward to you setting matters straight in relation to your appalling conduct, than the way that you've treated Mr Waring.
I appreciate your thoughts, Senator, that's not correct.
Mr Boyce, you can take that, the, the issue on notice, and if you need to get back to either the previous estimate session-
I appreciate your-
Where this was started, then you can do that. Thank you very much. Okay, Senator Carr.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Mr Boyce.
Good afternoon, Senator.
It's always a joy, isn't it, coming here? Look, can I just look, so just start with some simple matter. We've in the past raised some issues around the questions of parliamentary privilege. This previous Senate report had to raise the question about cultural change on this question. I understand the committee has drawn your attention to what appears to be a prima facie case of a problem with counsel, legal counsel seeking to, well, I, I, I say to you bluntly, seeking access to submissions outside of the standing orders. I draw that, I draw that to your attention, and-
Thank you.
And I just say to you, it is a matter of concern to me, Australia, correspondent's been received for a witness that Australia Post requests that you supply us with details of the reporting in which you say has been made with Australian Parliament, along with copies of any materials attached to or associated with that contact, and that's in correspondence from a legal special counsel from one of your legal services group. And that I put to you is outside the standing orders.
Senator, thank you very much. We take the letter that we received, and all matters within this, within this chamber is extremely serious, we've had that conversation. We did ask for some more details, so if we could-
It is a serious, that is a serious matter.
If we could, yeah.
So Senator Carr, perhaps if I can address that, we absolutely take our responsibilities to the Senate seriously. We took on board the criticism that was made during the course of the Senate inquiry, and we've undertaken training, and nobody takes that more seriously than I do. And if I can perhaps respond to what you've raised about that matter, we have had some correspondence with the committee about that particular incident. My understanding is that that communication was made outside the context of the Senate inquiry entirely. It was in relation to a dispute with a contractor around the process, as I understand it, and the contractor advised that they had written to Parliament about their concerns, and the lawyer concerned was asking for more information about that. It was not done in the context of the Senate inquiry, and that's information we provided to the committee.
You may well, I just advise you that you're getting awfully close.
Well, as I said, Senator, we take it very seriously. When this was raised with us by the committee secretary, we investigated and responded with that information.
I'll, I'll, I'll just, I'll be clear, I'll be clear, this is a correspondent's come to my office concerning submissions to this inquiry, and it wasn't just an independent matter outside of parliamentary processes. So whether your brief goes to that matter, that's my information. And I just say to you, previous inquiry did ask for measures to be taken, and you're the former CEO, did undertake some cultural change initiatives, and it is a bit of a disappointment to see this question come up again, particularly from the legal, from, in your legal branch.
We've had two rounds of training, and we take these matters extremely seriously, and if you can provide further information-
It's been a misunderstanding.
Yes, well, Senator, I assure you that's-
And I, the, the letter that I wrote as Chair, reminding you of the obligations to not intimidate or interfere with witnesses, of course, that stands post this hearing as well.
Absolutely.
And we will, let me say, if there is any suggestion that anybody has been impacted by appearing or giving evidence, we will take that extremely seriously.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Senator.
Look, also, I've tabled here a report on West Australian Delivery Tracker Daily Update. Now, it, to me, suggests that the ADM is struggling to cope with mail loads and the many letters being left behind, and as a result of basically staff shortages. Now, I can go through the detail of that if you like, but I think you have got a copy, I trust.
I just received one, Senator, so if you would like us to deal with that now, I can-
Can you tell me, what, is this, is this a reflection, and given that in Geraldton, for instance, and Canning, in, in Osborne, there seems to be a series of significant staff shortages, and as a consequence, delays in the delivery of mail. Do you think that's a reflection of the current situation? Does that report indicate that to you?
Senator, it's the first time I've seen the report just now. Welcome to the table, Mr Barnes, who's the Executive General Manager of Deliveries. I should point out that we have independent surveys of our delivery performance done by Kantar. Those Kantar results are then audited by the ANAO at the end of the year and published in our annual report. And from time to time, we have disruptions, cyclones, fires and floods, but this is-
It doesn't appear to be any cyclones.
I, I don't know these results, and I don't know what the report is telling me, so I might ask Mr Barnes to-
Thank you, Senator. Rod Barnes, Executive General Manager for Deliveries for Australia Post. I've just had a limited time to go through this, I've made some quick inquiries, Senator. Every day, in every posty facility, our DC managers or our managers complete a report of how the operation is going, so we get feedback of any kind of occurrences, whether that be leave, whether that be mail volumes. In early March, in the second week of March, there was a derailment coming in from Cowgully with the fire and floods that had been occurring. We had lots of backlog coming through. I believe these dates start from the 15th of March, being the Monday, through to the 17th of March, and that backlog came through at about the 11th of March, but I can check those details for you.
Because these reports are from the 17th, and it does here talk about unscheduled staff shortages. For instance, at Nedlands, there was three rounds held due to staff shortages, unmanned rounds was suggested, there were, we're talking here in the circumstances of 2,300 small letters held up. I can go through the report one by one, but there's no mention of derailments in this, or cyclones.
This is the, the daily, so we don't put the details of that occurrence in every day report, but in every postal centre in the country, we have a similar report. There's over 950 rounds, but I can confirm that for you, Senator.
Yes, I understand, and, you know, it's a big country, I understand it. But Rockingham, you know, these are in the city areas as well. This is not just, this is not just in country areas, so-
All of that volume, Senator, was, was prevented from getting into Perth to go to other destinations, so they were dealing with that backlog.
All right, well, you can give me a response, can you, to the suggestions? Thank you, I know, because the time's very short, I appreciate that. So is it the case that the so-called temporary regulations are in fact temporary? Is it the, because they're coming to an end now, aren't they? Is it, you're understanding they are temporary?
Thank you for that question. Temporary regulatory relief was granted through to the 30th of June this year.
Yeah.
We're consulting widely with, with a range of stakeholders about the sustainability of Australia Post, post the 1st of July should, without regulatory relief and to avoid becoming a burden.
Mr Boyce, is it your view they are temporary?
These reg, these temporary regulatory relief expires on the 30th of June, that is, that is our view.
Are you not intending to try to extend them?
We're consulting widely to work out the sustainability of Australia Post, but also how we can service the customers. We've had 314 million fewer letters in the 11 months post-COVID than we had in the 11 months pre-COVID.
Big parcel delivery, big expansion of parcels.
Correct. And to be able to service those, Senator, we need to redeploy some of our resources from, away from letters, which is loss-making, and those losses have been significant, and letters have been declining, as I say, 16% declining this year after steady declines of eight to 10% over many years.
I take it you've read Ms Holgate's submission to us, that's the supplementary submission?
Not the supplementary submission, I haven't had a chance.
Well, she's drawn it to, drawn our attention to the problem that might arise if there is an attempt to extend the regulations beyond the temporary agreed period, in terms of the consequences for the ongoing viability of Australia Post. In fact, it would be to the detriment, her argument, if this was to extend the regulations. And, you know, in terms of Qantas, it's now restored its, it's restoring its services, that they're in fact be counterproductive, she would suggest. If I look at the page three of her submission, and she's made a whole set of things, and she says this question about extensions raises a serious matter, particularly priority mail, which is a very important service for many small businesses, and without that service, many printing houses, the magazine companies suffer, and could impact further job losses. Is that true?
Senator, as I say, we're consulting with a range of stakeholders at the moment. We'll take Ms Holgate's submission and add that to the list. Can I just comment on-
I heard, I did hear your answer.
Priority.
I did hear your answer, but you see, Mr Boyce, it's been put to me that it's, you've been suggesting that it's not feasible to go back to the old service delivery standards, is that right?
Senator, could I just finish on that, on the priority? So temporary regulatory relief was for a number of reasons. There was the onset of COVID, and Qantas immediately grounded their fleet, absolutely. So we were unable to comply on the letter service and the priority service. And also, there was some concerns, if we think back to March last year, significant health concerns for our post offices, our LPOs and our, and our workforce, whether we could in fact keep all of our post offices open. So there was a part of the regulatory relief was around the number of post offices and the ability to close some of those post offices. We're very fortunate that we're able to put in protective equipment and keep all of our post offices open because the health crisis has been contained, so-
I understand, I understand the point you're, you're making, but it is, and I'm sorry to push you a bit hard on this, but the Chairman of the Board indicated to us earlier that, that there was going to be effectively a guarantee that there'd be no job losses for any corporate or licensed post officers. Is that, is that what you're planning? No job losses?
That's correct.
That's absolutely correct. The post offices, both corporate and licensed post offices, are critical aspects of sending and receiving prices.
Okay, so, so that's, that's in regard to, you say in corporate, so the proposition here, for instance, in a Boston Consulting Group, that the path two, Reform Path Two, which would see the, what have we got here? Three days per week for suburban metro, post office boxes and daily delivery, and it's a saving of 78 million? It's not, that's not intended to pursue that? That's-
Senator, the Boston Consulting Report was a report commissioned by government. It was an independent consultant's report, it's not a report of Australia Post.
I've read the, I've read the actual commissioning letter, and it actually spells out that it was to be seen in conjunction with the corporate plan, the current corporate plan. That's correct, isn't it? The incoming, to informing Chair and further inform the Board, in addition to Australia Post's existing corporate plan, 23rd, and Australia Government has appointed the management consultants firm to conduct a review of Australia Post's strategy to operate a sustainable fit-for-purpose service for the longer term, and the review will consider broader market conditions such as the growth in e-commerce, the regulatory environment and changes to business and consumer goods. That's, in fact, intended, isn't it, that it'd be part of the next corporate plan?
Senator, you're reading from the, from the letter, I don't have it in front of me, so I, I trust that that is correct. On joining Australia Post, I was surprised at how many reports and consultants we'd had, quarter-monthly, the year before, and PWC the year before.
This one commissioned last year, and, and which the Minister actually specifically said it was to be part of the corporate plan.
Senator, thank you. And when the BCG report, or review started and the report was issued, I see, I think I saw a, a late version, a late draft version in, in February, COVID wasn't on, on our horizon.
No.
COVID, COVID came and we were fast-forwarded four years, or five years potentially, so-
But Ms Holgate says that-
The corporate plan was done under COVID conditions.
But Ms, Ms Holgate tells us that, when she was there doing the job you're doing, that the regulations followed quite closely the Reform Path Two. Reform Path Two, that's in her submission, and the one of the reasons that, and she's, and the evidence she's presented today, one of the reasons that she's fallen out with the government- one of the reasons that she's fallen out with the government was the resistance from the senior management to the implementation of these cost-cutting measures. Because the Boston Consulting Group had said that the previous commission report, the strategic review undertaken by Australia Post management was too optimistic in its plan. And this was a much stiffer set of measures, which included Option Three, for instance, closure of 190 post offices.
Senator, that's a submission from Ms Holgate, obviously, that's her position.
But you are the CEO now, I'm just saying you're not familiar with the Boston Consulting Group recommendations. So you're trying, is that what you're?
Senator, I saw the report in February, COVID hit in March, and certainly for the last few months, I have not picked up the.
Okay.
The BCG report.
Well, perhaps you'd like to take on it.
We're in a different world.
Fair enough. You've said you haven't read Ms Holgate's additional submission. That does surprise me that the government would be briefed on it presumably?
No.
Again, that surprises me, but fair enough, you know, it's, is it, would you take on notice, please? Your response to the suggestion she's made in that submission as to the operations of the Boston Consulting Group contained in her supplementary submission as it relates to the existing plan and the consequences. Give you a chance to refute, this is the point of her evidence, as to what the implications are, given this report that she's now incorporated, including the specific, an executive summary, the executive summary, which includes quite specifically the Reform Paths One, Two, Three and Four, with details of what the consequences would be. Now, this is a report that the government's claimed executive privilege on, and has sought to suppress.
Keep secret.
All right, now, it's now a public document, so it's an opportunity for you to actually, as a result of the question I'm asking you, to respond to that. Specifically those matters that relate to the operations of the existing regulations and the consequences for job losses. Given that the Chairman of the Board has given us undertakings, that there will be none. Which I must say was a very generous proposition, I'm sure he's. Or was he, or did he just mean in the country? No job losses in the country?
Senator, we'll take, we'll take that away. It sounds very comprehensive.
Thank you very much.
In a suitable manner. Thank you.
I know I've taken a bit of time here, Manager, so I just wanted to make sure I've covered off on the substantive matters. I think that's, look, there is one thing. Now, you'll tell me, I know the answer is up in one level, that the Maddox Report, of course, is a matter for government, accept that, right? It is a matter of government. But the Prime Minister stated on the October, in October 22, that the independent investigation, that is the called Maddox Review, would be looking into the conduct of the Board and the governance, those actions of the management and the executive. So it does go to you as well as the Board. However, the report, Maddox Report, made it clear that the shareholder ministers instructed the shareholder departments to conduct a formal investigation into the gifts of the Cartier watches by the CEO and the Managing Director in November of 2018 for the senior managers. And I'm wondering, have you got any insight as to why the review, Maddox Review, did not examine the governance issues in regard to the Board or senior management more broadly? Will you provide with any advice at all on those matters?
Senator, I understand there are a number of findings around delegations and the board processes.
And there was matters in relation to the culture in the Maddox Review, I accept that. But it did not go to the broader issues, as the Prime Minister said it would, in terms of the conduct of Board members and their governance, as well as the actions of managements and the executive.
Senator, I, I understand, and there were findings in there around governance matters of the Board. However, if you have further questions, I think that's a department question.
Do you have any insights as to, will you provide with any advice as to why it didn't go further, as the Prime Minister indicated that it would?
Okay, there were investigations certainly into Board governance and delegations of authority, and there were findings as such in the report.
Right, sure.
I can go to those findings if you would like.
Senator Khanav.
Thanks, Chair, I'll be brief. Mr Boys, we heard earlier today the impact on Ms Holgate of standing aside and ultimate resignation. Do you think Australia Post has offered sufficient services to Ms Holgate to support her over the last few months?
Thank you very much, Senator. Ms Davies is the Executive General Manager of People and Culture. There is no higher person, Ms Davies is with me on the bench. And I understand she gave some evidence to the Committee earlier today. There is no more senior person to give support in the organisation to the people and the culture than Ms Davies. And she had all of the resources of the organisation and the support of the Board and senior management to provide all of that support to, to Ms Holgate.
So I just ask again, that's, I suppose, a statement of fact, your answer. I was asking for an evaluation of performance or of the effectiveness, I suppose, of that support. Do you think that support was adequate? Or are there any lessons for Australia Post from the experience of the last few months?
Senator, my statement of fact is that we provided to Ms Holgate the most senior person in the organisation across Board and management with the full resources and the full support of Board and management to provide that support.
Still doesn't really answer my question. Do you think the support offered was adequate?
I think, it's an opinion, it's a personal opinion. I think the statement of fact is we gave every bit of support that we possibly could to, by providing, Ms Davies, our most senior Executive General Manager in charge of People and Culture, with full support of the Chair and the Board and any support she wanted across the organisation, so it was accessible.
The Chair, the Chair this morning, well, this afternoon, actually, stated that Ms Holgate performed very well as CEO and he was disappointed to see her, see her ultimately leave. In your view, would the staff of the organisation welcome Ms Holgate back as CEO?
That's a personal opinion. I'm here in a professional capacity and I couldn't speak for others anyway.
Well, I could question whether it's a personal opinion, because I mean, if the government were to do it, do you think there'd be difficulties for the organisation, as those will characterise it in those terms? There'd be difficulties for, if Ms Holgate was reappointed as CEO?
I think there would, there likely to be, it's a challenging time, there would be difficulties. There's obviously been a lot said and a lot of waters passed under the bridge since the, Ms Holgate tendered her resignation on the 2nd of November. So it's been a significant time elapsed and a lot has happened since then, including today.
Right, okay, thank you, Chair.
I'm sorry I pushed you on this because I'm, I need to be a little tighter in my questions, obviously. It's, which is not your fault, it's mine. I'm wondering if you could be specific, have you approached the unions and asked them to support an extension of the current regulations?
I have not approached the unions.
Is anyone else in the leadership team?
We are consulting with a wide range of stakeholders and the unions is a critical supportive.
Specifically ask any of the unions to extend the existing regulations?
I would have to take that on notice or pass it to Ms Davies and Mr Barnes to check with them first. But other than that, we will take that on notice.
I'm happy to answer that question, Senator. So we've, we continue to work extremely hard with the unions to work through. I think you made a statement earlier on that we can't go back to where we were. I think it's not just a case of ADM, it's a case that the whole nature of the business has changed. The volumes have changed, the letter of mail volumes have changed. So myself and Rod Barnes have been working really hard with the unions to try and work through what this model needs to look like going forward. And absolutely, we've had conversations of, do we, do we look for an extension? Do we look for a different model? What do we look for? That works for Australia Post to be sustainable going forward?
Ms Davies, I can interpret that to mean you have asked them and they've said no because of the decline in service standards, inefficiencies of the ADM and a degradation of delivery standards. Would that be, is that correct?
I don't think that's a reflection, what we agreed.
They have said no. The unions have declined your invitation?
What they, they've declined the invitation in, you know, the extension of the regulatory relief as we stand at the minute, but what we agreed with the unions, we had a full day's consultation with the unions and we agreed 14 points needed fixing. And we talked about many different things. We talked about volumes, we talked about headcount, we talked about start times, we talked about many different things. And we agreed with the unions that we would work with them and start to fix a lot of the things that we need to fix.
So, Mr Boys, and so there's an ongoing conversation, is your evidence, right?
Yes.
Okay, Mr Boys, I was, I thought I was clear, but people are saying to me I'm a bit obscure on this. Can you guarantee that there will be no job losses at any corporate or licensed post offices as per the undertaking by the Chair earlier today?
That is absolutely our plan, Senator.
No guarantee, not your plan, guarantee.
Well, we can't guarantee licensed post offices, they're individual businesses and they make changes all the time. But it's not our part of our corporate plan, our strategy. In fact, if anything, we're motivated to grow business for our licensed post offices.
What's in the Boston Consulting Group?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, what plans have there been put in place to revert to the existing regulations once they expire on the 30th of June?
So there is, Senator, thank you very much for the question. There were a number of aspects to the temporary regulatory relief. The post office was one aspect of that, the ability to close. Fortunately, we haven't had to avail ourselves of that particular aspect, so we don't need to do anything because all post offices are open bar fires and floods. The other one is the priority mail. Qantas is gradually returning. And we are looking at alternate products for priority even as we speak.
So, Mr Boys, if I understand it correctly, in terms of the Senate, the matters that were, the regulations that were presented at the Senate, they come to an end in June?
30th of June.
30th of June, they come to an end. I presume you have made plans to revert to the normal service delivery standards come that date?
Senator, we are making plans as, as we speak. It's very important. We are 300, Senator, we are 314 million letters fewer now, so it's not reverting our operations.
Of course you're making plans, but are you making plans to return to the normal, the standard delivery?
To the previous.
To the previous standards that were in place prior to the introduction of the temporary regulations?
Senator, we are making plans to operationally revert to the standards. I can ask Mr Barnes to give you an update on those.
Thank you, Senator. We are making considerable plans. There's over 10,000 postie rounds and as the team have already talked through, the volumes pre-COVID in letters to post-COVID have dramatically reduced further. So in order to change those rounds back to an everyday delivery and back to the normal regulations, has to be a complete restructure of those rounds. That work has taken place at desktop level, just like it did in haste when COVID struck. But as we know, what we do in desktop is different to in the field, so that's all being tested through. We've had to order extra equipment, those orders have been placed and paid for. It's not quite correct that Qantas have returned to normal, they're running at about 60% capacity. They're also using narrow-bodied aircraft, so we are not getting all of our mail away on aircraft, particularly on the long-haul sectors. If it is town to town and doesn't require line haul, we'd be able to do much better. But we are still suffering from a lack of capacity despite increasing our freighter network. We're also working through that. There has been a lot that's changed. And in relation to the priority service, that would still be a challenge for us, particularly in remote and long-haul areas, depending on the services that Qantas and other airlines offer. But there's a lot of work being done in that area, Senator.
All right, thank you, but given the time, thank you very much.
Senator, may I add that we have a number of obligations upon Australia Post. And that is the community service obligations and also not to become a burden on, on the taxpayer to make a commercial return. And the financial sustainability of Australia Post of reverting operationally, not under the regulations, but operationally back to the previous model, would have significant impacts on the financial sustainability of Australia Post. We're working through that, so there's a number of factors that we need to consider. And we are consulting with a wide range of stakeholders at the moment.
Thank you, Mr Boys. Senator Khanav has a final question.
Have you met with the Licensed Post Office Group recently?
I haven't met with the Licensed Post Office Group, stepping in into the, into the role as I did right at the onset of peak.
Five months now?
And I've got Ms Sheffield who meets and speaks with the Licensed Post Office Group.
But in five months as acting CEO, you've never met with the Licensed Post Office Group?
No, I've got Ms Sheffield who's met with me very regularly.
To meet with the Licensed Post Office?
I would meet with the Licensed Post Office Group any, any time that they would like to meet with me. I've never been asked to meet with the Licensed Post Office Group.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr Boys and the rest of your team for appearing today. That concludes today's proceedings. We appreciate you sticking around to this late hour. I want to thank all of the witnesses who've given evidence today and to those that have given submissions. Big thanks to Hansard Broadcasting and the Secretariat who worked extremely hard today to allow us to manage it as best as we could. As we've said several times throughout the day, there will be another hearing and a number of the witnesses that we didn't get to today will be called to that. Thank you very much.